I know we have a couple folks online, so just want to check with the clerk to see if we're.
He's on?
Okay.
I'll see Amanda.
Great. All right, well, I think the first matter of business, since this is really our first meeting of the new year, is to nominate a chairperson for the broadband authority. And so I'll open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, since she's done such a wonderful job, I would like to nominate Supervisor Smith again.
You're just too kind.
A second. Okay, nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Chairperson? Seeing none, I'll close the nominations. So we have a nomination for Supervisor Lori Smith, or Authority Member Lori Smith, as chair.
Mr. Sandy, before you call for the question, I've got a proposal or a comment I'd like to make.
Yes, sir.
I, to be perfectly honest with you, I'd like to see this for us to go to a committee, instead of the board being the over top of this. In other words, each one of us do like we do, like the social services and all the other boards, pick one from each member of our community to go on there and sort of take this meeting off of us. Because simply put, I'm not that astute or smart when it comes to this broadband stuff. And I think I could find somebody from the Boone District to represent us in committee, and then when you'd be chair over that, I mean, or oversee it just like you're doing now, and come back to us like all these other committees. That's how I feel about that.
I don't know if the state code will allow that.
I think what I was going to say was, the way it's set up structurally right now is as an authority. And so I think if that's something that the group wanted to do, you know, it's set up now where the authority is the seven members of the Board of Supervisors. And so if you guys wanted to change that, I think it could be changed, but there would have to be that document would have to be modified in order to change that. So I think maybe under other matters later, that's something that you guys could discuss if you want to move in that direction. And then we can get the attorneys to start looking at what would be needed to change that.
Cool. That's cool. That's cool.
Okay.
I don't mean no offense to nobody, to you or nobody else, Ms. Smith, because of that. I just think we got enough on our plate without this as well. That's how I feel about it.
Okay. Well, see, Chris is here, so maybe under other matters, maybe that's something we can have.
Absolutely.
Have him look into.
Since Chris is here now.
If that's the desire of the group, so. All right. Did you want to do a roll call vote, Matty, for the nomination of Lori Smith as chair of the broadband authority?
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum is absent for the vote. Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And thank you, colleagues on the board, for your continued confidence.
You going to stay there, or you want to move there?
I don't care. I'm fine. So do you want me to take it at this point? Am I supposed to take it at this point? Okay. Again, board, thank you for your continued confidence. I am very humbled by that. So the next item on the agenda will be, I would like to open the floor for nominations for the Franklin County Broadband Authority for the role of vice chair. And so the floor is formally open to receive your nominations. Don't be shy, folks.
And currently, that's Mr. Tatum as the second?
Currently, it is Mr. Tatum, yes. I know what y'all are thinking.
Well, if Tim's not here, I'll just nominate Tim.
That's what I knew was getting ready to come.
Not here, so I'll nominate Tim.
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the second? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of, well, first of all, okay, all those in favor of the nomination signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye. And I'll close the floor for nominations, which I should have done a minute ago. Okay, congratulations to Mr. Tatum. Mr. Thompson, I'll let you bear the bad news.
You'll get it. You'll understand.
The vote, right?
Yeah, do a vote.
The vote? I thought we voted.
It was just for the nomination.
Oh, for the closing nominations. Good point. So all those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Tatum as vice chair of the broadband authority, please signify by saying aye. Or do we want a roll call, Matty?
I can do a roll call.
You want a roll call, okay.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum is absent for the vote. Supervisor Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Matty. Okay, so that carries unanimously, and we congratulate Mr. Tatum, and look forward to announcing that to him. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the authority minutes from November, which seems like a world ago. I think the minutes were sent out early this morning. Have you all had a chance to review the minutes? And are you prepared to approve the minutes as they've been submitted? I would entertain a motion to approve them if you're ready to do so.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there some?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. All those in favor. Matty, do you want a roll call for minutes?
No, a voice vote is sufficient.
Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next item. Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to you. So, yes, at this stage on the agenda with our VADI project updates, I would like to turn this portion of the agenda over to Mr. Sandy.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So usually, when we get together, we like to get an update on our projects and where they stand for our broadband initiatives. And currently, we really are working with two partners, Chantel and River Street Networks. So we've got those folks here with us today. And we also have Amanda Cox, she's on the Zoom calls with American Electric Power. And so they're really a partner in both of these projects as well. And on the Chantel side, it's more of the permitting and make-ready with the utility poles is the partnership there. River Street, it's a more, I would say, more active partnership through the utility leverage program where American Electric Power is actually providing what we call the middle mile fiber for the project. And River Street is providing the last mile portion of the fiber project. So it's a, the River Street is much more structured partnership with the power company, but they're certainly involved in both of our projects. And we have listed Jessica Wilmer to represent Chantel. My understanding is she had a family issue that she had to take care of today. And so pinching in, pinch hitter is Brian Bird with Chantel. And then also Tabitha has joined us as well as one of the project managers for the project. Brian, I believe your title is more of the government relations kind of thing, but you and I work a lot together on the VADI applications, the VADI reports, and a lot of the aspects of these VADI grants. So Brian's very capable and very familiar with VADI and this project. So he's stepping in on relatively short notice, but he's stepping in. I'm sure he'll do just fine, giving us an update from Chantel. And like I said, Amanda is on the line from American Electric Power as well. And then Rob Taylor is here from River Street. So my suggestion would be, as the agenda says, let's hear from Chantel first. And then I think if there's any questions related to that project or those projects, we can have those questions, and then we can move on to discussion with River Street. Thanks, Brian. Thanks for coming all the way from Edinburgh.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, Steve. And again, like Steve said, you know, we worked a lot together, and it's kind of crazy to think how much activity has already happened. And Steve's been a tremendous leader in the broadband space, obviously locally, but also across the state for many years. So good afternoon, authority. Congratulations, Chairman Smith. So I'll be given, like Steve said, the Chantel project update today. And so I'll go ahead and just first thing, before we even get into the slides, give a kind of bottom line upfront. We've got just about 1,200 households passed in the county so far today. That is a mixture of the VADI homes as well as non-VADI homes. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means in just a second. And we're hopeful, you know, as has been discussed in previous meetings, there have certainly been, due to the volume of work across the state and across the nation, there have been some significant choke points in permitting across, again, across the nation. We're hopeful that working closely with AEP, we're turning a corner on some of that and really getting some increased production. But there's definitely still a long way to go across the board to make sure that we are getting to where we need to be, again, for the entire project. Two pieces of context for the project, for those of you who maybe weren't involved in the very early stages of this. The Chantel project was actually awarded by the state as a hybrid, partly fiber, partly fixed wireless project, with the hope being that doing it that way would allow us to have quicker speed to market, would be cost efficient, and be more competitive in the grant-making process. There would be less fiber laid and less delays with all of the choke points that we're experiencing today. And it would get fiber well out into the county, and then we could continue, and get broadband to just about everybody. And then we could continue to push that fiber further and further. So post-award, that Chantel, along with, you know, some of the county partners, went back to DHCD because the state awarded that hybrid grant due to a number of circumstances. At the same time, there was a lot of signals at the state and federal level that fixed wireless was no longer going to be considered broadband, even though what we had was licensed fixed wireless, a high-quality product. The fact of fixed wireless was kind of being pushed out. And so we brought $12 million of additional Chantel capital to the table, and we're able to secure some additional state funding for Franklin, Campbell, and Bedford to transition that to a full wireline project. But what that did was, post-award, just about doubled the miles of fiber. And there was, and so a lot of redesign and reengineering and working on that post-award to do what was best for the county ultimately, to make sure that this was a full fiber project. And at the same time, as I mentioned, those VADI and non-VADI homes, when this was awarded, we were given pretty firm instructions from the state to not include households that had been part of a previous VADI grant. In this case, the Blue Ridge Towers, Brisknet, now Seontec. So we removed a lot of homes from the project that were covered by fixed wireless that we would have liked to have included. But we are still picking up a significant number of those homes, and that's where those non-VADI homes are. So when I said that 1,200, that includes those homes that we wanted to include, but we're told not to. Okay. Let's see. All right, that works. So the first piece of this, the kind of the core network, is our POP and then our cabinets. Those are kind of the central points from which our fiber runs out to feed all of the last mile connections. And we have five of those here in the county. And those are all set, and those have power to them. So the POPs and our cabinets, that kind of core piece is all there. And then from those, that's where those five kind of project areas in the county are derived from, the Hardy, Westlake, Redwood, Farum, and Boones Mill. Those cabinets, those centralized points. And then from there, the county was further subdivided into 19 different DSAs or designated service areas for the fiber-to-the-home projects. And then we had identified 70 different extensions of our cable plan. And that's those half-mile road here, quarter-mile road there with one home at the end, maybe two homes along it, were just kind of those targeted wins where we could just, you know, in the normal course, those are $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 per home. But we included them in this project. And so a total of about 650 homes across those COAX projects. And so where we are in the engineering today, we're pretty much 100% complete on all the design routing. We have over 11,000 poles submitted across all the different pole owners in the county, a number of different waterways, VMRC permits, and a number of railroad permits as well. And those are all submitted permits. And you can see the breakdown between AEP, CenturyLink, Verizon, so on and so forth, the breakdown of each of those permits. Obviously, the vast majority of those are with AEP, who's the dominant power provider in the county. And then we've got 528 miles of work in job package status. And what that means is our engineering firms has completed that work. We have construction drawings. There's still a little bit of QC on our side that we do with those before we put them out to construction. But again, a significant amount of that, you know, is ready to go to construction for the most part with permits submitted. How that breaks down across the different areas. So the Westlake and the Hardy DSAs are all released to sales. So those two project areas are done. There's still some of those COAX extensions throughout those. But as far as the fiber-to-the-home portions go, for Hardy and Westlake are released to sales. Boones Mill, Farum, and Redwood, again, those are where those job packages are. Kind of going through the last bit of QC, we have a lot of those. That's where a lot of our pending permits are today. And while those permits are pending is when that kind of final QC process is happening on those job packages. But again, we have, the engineering is done, permits are submitted, and we're working with AEP on a weekly basis to kind of prioritize and strategize as much as we can to get whatever throughput we're getting in the right places that allows us to get the most forward production that we can. And again, working very closely with all the utility providers, weekly, sometimes more than that, meeting with each of them, just again, to try to say as clear communication as possible and to manage this as well as we can. So a lot here, but at the top level, what you see here is that we've got two projects right now that are in active construction. Those are two of those smaller COAX projects that are moving on. But upcoming in the next couple of months, we have three different fiber-to-the-home DSAs that are ready to go to construction that we anticipate releasing to construction pretty soon. Altogether with those three projects, there's about 582 homes passed in those three. And then we've got those six upcoming COAX extensions for about 37 additional homes passed. So we've got two that are out there now with crews working on them, and then three DSAs and six of the COAX extensions that we anticipate releasing to construction pretty quickly. A lot here, but all this is, is to point out that we have, of those 60, of those 70 COAX extension projects that I mentioned at the very beginning, we've got about 60 of those done. So those COAX extensions are moving along very quickly. And across that, we have, it's hard to read down there, but you got about 304 subsidized homes done with those projects. And then another 124 homes that were not part of the project but are getting serviced nonetheless as part of that. And then this is the breakdown of the release-to-sales projects in the fiber-to-the-home areas. I'll call out the last one. You see zero subsidized homes and 111 non-subsidized. That was over in Westlake. There were, again, kind of with that approach we had to take with the fixed wireless homes that didn't make it in, there was a pretty sizable neighborhood over in the Westlake area that was not part of the VADI project. But as we were building near it, even though there were zero subsidized homes in there, we went ahead with Chantel Capital and built that neighborhood out, including all of the vacant lots that are there. So we went ahead and took care of that as we were in the area because it made, yes, sir. So each of those, each of the rows is a different project area. As this is kind of broken down, as the engineering process goes through, it kind of has to break down to, you know, what the technology kind of centralized to certain points and then feeds homes off that centralized points. And so we break it into small project areas based off of that. And so what this is saying is that there are, six of those project areas are complete, and that people in those areas can sign up for service. And there were 503 of those homes that were included in the VADI grant. And then beyond that, there were another 239 homes that we have served that can sign up for service today. They can call in and say, hey, I want service, and we'll go service them, even though they weren't part of the VADI grant originally. Yes, sir. And the customer take rate down there of 218 so far. There's been about 100 of those, 100-plus of those happened in just the last month. We had pretty significant production at the end of the year. We got a number of permits out. And we'll talk about this later on. We have construction crews everywhere, just chomping at the bit to get work done. So when we get permits out and approved, you know, in some cases, we're able to turn those projects around in a month because we've just, we've got people who are there, hungry, ready to do the work, ready to get paid. So that's kind of what happened at the end of the year. We had a number kind of breakthrough that we were able to get to construction quickly, get them done. And again, you can see the response from the residents is tremendous because they need broadband.
Of course. So you enabled 742 houses, right, with the two columns together?
Yes, sir.
And of those 70, 742 new customers, only 218 have signed up for service? Is that how you read that?
Yes, sir. But a lot of those were just released to sales recently. So it takes a little while for mailers to go out and then installations to get scheduled.
And so how does your company feel about that rate? That's one question. And the second is, how is that rate compared to other areas? Is it higher or lower, like?
Yeah, so, so in, it's actually very high for the timeframe that that service has been available. Even in areas where there's just one provider, it's not uncommon to have a take rate of, after many years, 50% to 70%. And that's been a surprising learning curve for me in this industry. When I started five, six years ago, that even in towns and cities where you're the only provider, the only wireline broadband provider, 50%, 60% plus percent is a pretty good take rate. A number of people, a number of people, there's a lot of people who just use cellular. It's just by choice or by cost. Sometimes people, it's just price of service, and they're paycheck to paycheck and not sure. So there's a number of considerations there. And then there's an increasing number of people who are choosing fixed wireless from T-Mobile or Verizon. So even in denser urban areas where you're the only wireline provider, 50%, 60% after, again, many, many years, is not uncommon. So 218 out of the 740-odd, after only having service live for a few months, is actually a pretty strong take rate. And we expect that to increase significantly.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Is it, are y'all going to send out a mailer to the people that this is available, or is it up to the county?
Yep. We send it all out. So we, our process for notification is prior to construction, send out mailers and do door hangers and let people know.
I got that in the mail.
Okay, good. Good. Because if it's not going out in the mail, I want to know. Because we want people to know for a lot of reasons. One, because we want to take service. But two, because construction can be disruptive. If you're not expecting it and you've got people out boring in the right-of-way in front of your house, people can get a little, yeah. Okay. So those mailers are to go out ahead of time. There's also supposed to be additional communications, door hangers, multiple mailers, things like that happening, saying, hey, construction's coming. Watch out for it, just so you know what's happening. And then after, it can be a little while after that. So if there's a project area, say, is 200 homes. If you're the first home in that project area, you're going to see construction, obviously, the earliest. But we can't release that to sales until the whole project area is complete. And then it has to be, the fiber has to be what's called spliced. It has to be connected appropriately, lit up. And then we do some testing to make sure that, hey, everything from end to end is running properly. It's all up there because we don't want to be preemptive and have, you know, something didn't connect properly, and then we're telling people they can get service, and then there's a failed install. So we do the quality check on that and certify that. And then those mailers will go out and say, so you might see construction happening today, but the actual time when you can sign up for service is a month or two down the road when all that work is complete.
Well, mine is the Hardy area. And that's what I was waiting. It's already there. Sign me up. Go ahead and sign me up.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'll connect with you afterwards, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You good, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, thank you.
And so that's it on the 22 project. As some of you may know, there was a 21, a 2021 project that was a rescope of a different project that we kind of took over. So it started around the same time as the 2022 project. Says field walkouts are underway, but I was informed this morning that those have actually been completed. So the field walkout is all done on that. It's got about 20 miles of new fiber, seven miles of COAX. We've got, the Old Farm Road and Woods Edge are completed. About 70, 75 homes between the two of those projects. And then we've got the Hardy area, Y-Song, A, B, and C is part of that, this project as well. And that's one that we're working again. Got about 200 homes in there. And then we've got, again, that one is expected to go to construction in April, pending a couple of permits being approved. And this is just kind of summarizing that same information. And then so areas of concern, just kind of a health check on the project. Like I said earlier, contractor availability and materials. Those were two of the big items that, when all this money started flowing out, everyone was worried that, oh, no one's going to be able to get contractors, you're not going to be able to get fiber. We have more than enough fiber. We have more than enough contractors. One item that is, utility locates, has been a little bit of a challenge just because, again, all the pace that's out there. But we've brought in some locators in-house so that we've staffed up and ramped up to that we can supplement that ourselves. And that has helped significantly. Really, the big issue is, again, what it has been from the beginning, is permitting timelines. Again, obviously, you know, we're working continuously with AEP. We were informed that they now have three crews, construction crews, dedicated to Chantel's project in Franklin County. Amanda, I'll let you speak to that, if that's accurate or not. But that was the latest I had, is three construction crews. And that's the AEP crews that are out there changing out poles, moving wires around, doing all that make-ready work that needs to happen before we are allowed to safely attach to those. The next point where we're working closely with AEP on and trying to get ramped up there is the engineering piece of it. And that's one where we've offered to pay for, you know, we pay for all the engineering that's done. We pay for the make-readies that gets done. We're trying to work with AEP now to staff up and beef up the engineering work. And that's the people who go out and actually look at the poles and say, does this pole need to be replaced? Do these wires need to be changed? What needs to be done on this pole to make it safe to attach? And that's where the, I think, the biggest kind of bottleneck is right now, is getting things out of that engineering phase into construction, make-ready construction. And then that comes to us for actual fiber construction. So again, we've had positive conversations with AEP, especially towards the end of the year, escalating this and getting a little bit more focused on this. You know, we've been very, very grateful for Amanda and the partnership. She's done a really great job and worked well with us. Just up the chain from her, getting more attention and more resource allocated, resources allocated to the project has really been kind of where the communication and the push has been, again, especially on that engineering side. The railroads have, I mean, they've always been a challenge. The state passed a law last year to try to bring their railroads to heel a little bit and force them to move faster. And surprisingly, the railroads have litigated. So that legislation is currently, they're suing. And just the volume, again, of work has caused the railroads to put a little bit of extra precautions in place and say, there's so much work, you all have to follow a new process that's a little bit more lengthy. We're working very hard, again, to find ways that maybe we can pay for contract crews that'll be dedicated to Chantel. Pay a little bit extra money to try to get that moving a little bit faster. And then VDOT as well. VDOT has historically been really good and on top of it. But I think the volume is starting to hit them as well. And so instead of working directly with the local reps, which has historically been the way it goes, those permits are getting routed to a central portal. And sometimes those are going to the Richmond office. And so we get a different set of comments back than we normally get. And then we respond to those, resubmit those, and then those maybe get submitted to a different office where we get a different set of comments back. And so that's kind of this additional cycles on the VDOT permits that are causing some headaches as well. But again, we're working very hard to, how can we stand up better routine meetings and make sure that these permits are going to the same person and we're not getting bounced around because it's just not helpful for anybody?
Brian, would you just briefly give us a little bit of background about Railroad Protection Service? What does that mean?
Yeah. So I'm not the expert, so I'm kind of standing right on the edge of what I can confidently say.
Understood. Sure.
But obviously, and this is the same thing with AEP and VDOT as well, is their primary concern is the safety of their own infrastructure and safely operating those infrastructure. Doesn't, you know, there's been a lot of headlines in the news about railroad safety issues recently and those not being followed appropriately and the implications of that. And so the railroads really, they want, they want to very tightly control any sort of work that goes on anywhere near their railroads. So that extends to forcing people who want to do railroad crossings to go buy specific railroad insurance, which, we have general liability insurance. We have a lot of it. But the railroads, you know, if you don't get railroad insurance, you can't play. They're short-staffed, and so it's kind of an inconvenience to them. So they'll kind of get to it when we get to it. And then they need people on-site for every utility that needs to do work. So if we've got an AEP pole line that crosses a railroad, AEP, and AEP... A and AEP has to do make-ready on those poles. For us to attach, they have to do new poles. The railroad has to be present for AEP to do that work. And then they make us wait for them to come back and be present, then us to do that work later down the road. Right? And so it's just a lot of sitting around twiddling your thumbs, waiting for the railroads to get motivated enough to send people out.
I guess suffice it to say is, this is a function that's going on between AEP and Chantel. That's a cog in the wheel, basically.
Yes.
From what you're in incurred delays as a result.
Yes, and we're working very hard to, hey, look, if you guys can get your folks out here at the railroad to stay for AEP and Chantel to do their work at the same time. How can we align these? You know, a lot of, a lot of emails and letters and escalations as much as we can to as many of these entities as we can. But yes, at the end of the day, you can't cross a railroad without the railroad's permission. And the railroad is gonna dictate the terms of that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. And so with that, that that's all I've got. I'm happy to to take any additional questions. Again, hopefully, uh, we're seeing some of this this turn definitely on the AEP make-ready construction. We're heartened by the news of of having multiple crews here dedicated just in Franklin County. And now we're really hoping that we can see the same thing happen on that engineering side because that's, there's a lot of volume there.
Thank you, Brian. I will open up the floor for any of the authority members for questions. Before we do that, um, I think it would probably be appropriate, Amanda. I would like to give you um a few minutes to respond to some of the uh AEP issues that are embedded in the Chantel presentation, if you're prepared to do that.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the authority, Amanda Cox with AEP Appalachian Power. I really wish I was there with you in person and not stuck in Richmond. But hopefully, you'll invite me to a a future meeting and I can get there. But as Brian mentioned, this is, it's a big job. Over ten thousand poles alone um have been submitted for this project. And I just want to give you some perspective. In a normal year that where seven hundred and fifty million dollars has not been dumped into the state for railroad broadband, we see about ten thousand poles per year. So we're seeing these increased volumes all across our footprint. So we have counties that are submitting projects larger than we would typically see in a year. And every county has a project. As Brian mentioned, we have seven crews dedicated to this project. And three of those um are working, the those in Franklin County where we have a backlog of about twenty-nine jobs and around nine hundred hours or so. Pike Engineering, you know, uh, Brian's right. I mean, that's probably, at this point, the biggest holdup. But they are definitely projecting how many proposals that they're gonna release each month. They are letting our partner know. I mean, we are talking with Chantel at least weekly. I would say we're having lots of ongoing discussions and conversations, but they have kept up with their projections. And right now, our backlog looks like um about seventeen hundred seventy-three poles that have been analyzed and released from engineering. So that means we're ready to start construction. We have, this is a big number, eighteen hundred poles still in engineering to be analyzed. And then we have three hundred and thirty-six poles that have been engineered. And we're awaiting Chantel's approval of cost and an okay to proceed with the work order preparation. And that's a normal course of business. We submit everything back to Chantel. They review the routes, make sure that's the way they want to go. And that's kind of the breakdown of what we have. Those of you that know me, you know, this is definitely not my area of expertise, but I tend to dig in. And so I have sat down with our joint-use make-ready guys to better understand what we're doing. Since we have prioritized um Chantel's work order, we have, I'm just gonna go through like the top five priorities. We've completed priority one. We've approved the permits. They've been sent and we've released those to Chantel to do the work. On the second priority, we've completed all of those. We have approved permits. They've been uh sent and released to Chantel to do their work. On the third priority, all engineering is complete and we're awaiting a construction schedule so that um we can let Chantel know when we're gonna be where, so that they can mobilize their crews and start working on that third priority. On the fourth, we are in engineering now. Most all have been sent an estimated cost and Chantel is about is evaluating, as I mentioned before, making sure that's the route they want to take. And then on priority five, half of that engineering is complete. And of that half, again, half are waiting that approval from Chantel. And we have another half that we need to complete. So out of those top five priorities, we are definitely seeing movement. We have had uh lots of discussions, lots of calls. You know, I have done uh my best to engage like different folks from the department, different levels of leadership. We understand the importance. We understand that you want your folks connected. We want our customers connected. So we are, you know, definitely seeing a ramp up a little bit slower than I I had hoped we would see. But we are working, we we consider Chantel a partner in this project. We consider the county a partner in this project. And we are working together to the best of our ability. And I know it's not quite fast enough, um, but hoping still that that the speed will will pick up and that you'll see a little more output and more connections in the county.
Amanda, thank you so much. Does any uh any of the authority members have any questions for Amanda? Any comments? Okay, Amanda, thank you so much. And um it gives us great confidence having you on the front lines on behalf of the county. And we appreciate the progress that's being made, uh, without question. And um I think you've got a a grasp on the importance and priority of these polls and getting, you know, these things released. So thank you for your diligence and just keep us posted. If there's anything we need to do on our end, we stand ready to facilitate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So authority members, do you have any questions or comments for Brian? In his presentation? Okay, here now, thank you so much. Very, very good presentation, very informative. Just keep a a close eye on Franklin County, keep us moving in a forward, expeditious way.
Of course. Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sandy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And um next, we'll we'll move into the the second project that we have going on in the county. It's with River Street Networks. This uh, for those of you that are newer to the to the authority, this was a a partnership, actually a regional partnership. This this project was um part of a West Piedmont Planning District Commission application that included Patrick County, Henry County, and Franklin County, all working with River Street. And for us, uh, in Franklin County, it really represents a lot of the southern part of the county. So Snow Creek, Sontag, over towards Indicott and uh Henry areas is is typically where we're, River Street will be working. The flip side of that is Chantel's kind of working the the northern uh portions of the county way, county from the lake all the way over to Callaway area. So just geographically, that's kind of how the projects are kind of broke out. And so Rob's gonna give kind of an update there. If you recall, that that this project, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, is is a really a direct partnership with Appalachian Power, kind of in a different way. And and again, Appalachian Power is is providing middle-mile fiber and it's part of the state's utility leverage program. And so part of the um initial process here was actually uh last year, most of last year, we were really waiting for the State Corporation Commission to approve kind of this partnership and this project. And then once that approval was done, AEP was then able to start doing some engineering along with River Street. And so we've reached uh February where uh we're we're hoping that construction is is right on the the doorstep. But uh these guys will give us a uh an update on kind of where things stand today and and what the activities are currently. So I'll turn it over to Rob uh with that.
Good afternoon, Rob.
Good afternoon. I'm Rob Taylor with the River Street Networks. I'm out of uh the Pennsylvania County Danville Office. Just to give you an overview, uh, for those of you who are not familiar with it, uh, to kind of repeat what Steve was saying. If you take a look at the map, you'll see that we have the uh the uh bottom east and western quadrants of the county. That the shaded area is what we call is the Chantel Bubble. So that's where they're, they they have uh services and they're building out and everything. Our our uh project for the county includes funding from uh VADI twenty twenty-two as well as VADI twenty twenty-three. Currently, we're in the contract negotiation record portion of the twenty twenty-three. That one was given a letter of intent. The state wants to see construction started as well as uh passings going before they'll uh actually assign the funds. And I've got some information here. So hopefully, uh, we've been going through the um the contract negotiation records. I think there's something on the on the itinerary later today to get you all to approve the addendum. And that's gonna be part of the record that we'll submit to the state to get the VADI twenty twenty-three award uh finalized and awarded to uh continue to build in the county. So in total, we have two hundred and seventy-five, uh, two thousand seven hundred forty-five passings. It's about two hundred and eighty-five route miles of fiber. Uh, our project is all fiber. Uh, there is no coax. It's fiber to the home uh all the way back. Uh, again, as as mentioned earlier, we'll be using uh middle-mile fiber that's being provided by AEP along their uh pole alliance. And then we'll extend fiber from there, more than likely underground to different uh areas a- as we serve it. The project total is just under, or just under twenty-five million dollars. River Street brought in four point, almost four point eight million. We had eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand in ARDOF funding. That's the World Digital Opportunity Fund, which is an FCC funding mechanism that we brought to the table as well. And AEP brought in about ten point two million dollars of matching uh capital. Now, that doesn't include any VADI twenty twenty-three contribution. It's mainly twenty twenty-two contribution. The county in total is bringing up one point eight million dollars, and we were able to secure about seven point two million dollars from the state. Here's an overview of of the two service, primary service areas. You have the service areas in that burnt uh brownish color there. And then you have the possible uh POP locations that we're looking at, our point-of-presence locations, where we would house our electronics to serve the different locations there. Currently, we already do have service in in the county. There's twenty-seven locations. And I've provided a address listing uh to Steve earlier, so he has all those address points. There's additional thirteen locations that are currently under construction that we hopefully will be able to light up here uh very soon. These locations are basically being fed out of our Pennsylvania County build. And we do have plans to continue that. If you look into the Pinhook area, there's a polygon down there that has approximately two hundred and twenty homes that we plan on extending that as well. And what you see here is the the uh, the the dark brown area is the polygon. Any homes inside there, the 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 um, where you have the the small houses, those are VADI twenty twenty-two award uh locations. And then the um, the red line that's underneath the blue uh, the blue uh squares there are, is the, an actual existing or to-be-built uh fiber line that uh AEP has. And the blue uh areas are actual handholds or uh pedestals that we'll have to install. But anyway, there's about two hundred and twenty homes there. So, you know, conf- uh, right now, AEP was supposed to start construction on this around uh the early to middle part of February. Hopefully, Amanda can speak to that. I don't think construction's quite started yet. But again, we do have locations that are already lit up, and we are working on locations to bring online soon. And we'll continue to uh add additional locations in the Pinhook area while AEP begins their build-out. And then once they start building out, the plan is there is, as they start building out and get certain sections done, they'll turn it over to us to extend last mile to the customers. That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Authority members, do you have any questions? Any comments?
I do.
Please.
When can we, um, I've been here a year and listening to all these, and and I've listened to you several times. When can we expect service to reach into, say, like the Sago, Snow Creek, Sontag area? When are you, when are you all planning on starting, beginning construction in that direction?
That would have to be answered by AEP. They they, again, they're providing the middle mile, and so we can't get to it till they they build out that middle mile. So I I don't have the engineering information as far as what their schedule is to start those areas. But as soon as Amanda or I get it, we'll we'll relay that to you.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell, would you like to speak to to Amanda with regard? Amanda, would would you like to address that question for Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, Madam Chair. Supervisor Mitchell, I've been IEMing our folks, trying to get an answer to that question, hopefully in real time, because I do not have the construction schedule for the different portions handy. If I don't get a response, I will uh reach back out to the county with that information and make sure that it's um, it's sent to you. And if you have questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amanda or Rob? Okay, Rob, I certainly appreciate the update. We are very grateful to have you at the table, hooking our citizens up. And as always, um, continue to keep us updated and let us know what we can do on our end, if there's anything that we can help facilitate. We appreciate it.
Sure, uh, the only thing is that, again, we have that.
Yes.
Addendum to look over and also to make you all aware of BEED.
Yes.
BeED funding uh will be coming down. They haven't final finalized the map yet for BEED. Once they do, then we'll look and see if there's any pockets that are inside our area to see about going after BEED funding.
Very good, very good. Yeah, we gotta keep an eye on that. I don't think they know yet.
They don't.
Thank you, Rob. We very much appreciate you being with us. Mr. Sandy.
Yes, so uh, next item we had was just uh updates on twenty twenty-four. So for these projects, we really have been kind of uh tracking them by year that we've applied for grant funding. So when we use these these terms, the the VADI, for those of you that are not uh familiar, as familiar as some others, is a state program that provides funding for broadband. And so the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative is is really what it stands for. So we use VADI a lot, but that's really what that means. We have uh really only gone after state funding at this point. There has been some other federal programs out there, but all the programs we've applied for funding through have been uh state programs. And we, with the twenty twenty-four application, we're up to about twenty-three million dollars of of grant funding from the state to to help us with broadband. And you know, over uh thirty million in private funding to go alongside that. So, you know, we've been pretty successful. And so we've applied again for twenty twenty-four. So uh, we talked about the minutes earlier. So our last meeting in November was really talking about our twenty twenty-four application. We ultimately decided to submit an application with ZITEL. And that application was submitted. That application was, get my numbers right here, it's kind of in your packet, but um was proposing coverage for about thirty-one hundred um units in the county that were either currently unserved with any kind of service or underserved. So um, when we say underserved, that could be uh somebody that has Bright Speed or uh CenturyLink DSL, which is a kind of a slower speed, which is not considered served. And so we, that that's a terminology we use as underserved for those type type of customers. So it was about thirty-one hundred uh customers. It was about two hundred miles of fiber that was submitted. Total project cost was about thirteen and a half million. We've requested just under five million from the state uh to help us complete that. And if you recall, our local match was was ten thousand dollars uh for the the local funding. And ZITEL would would be picking up the remaining uh private portion of that. So so that was submitted. It was accepted. With the state, they they go through a program of evaluating those applications. They uh also go through what they call a challenge process. And so in that process, uh, any other providers can say, well, wait a minute, we we can serve that one or we already serve that house. And so there's a period of of all these applications going through a challenge process. And I think Rodney even mentioned that from ZITEL, that likely, you know, there would be a challenge process. So we did receive word this week that there is a challenge on some of those households. Um, and so we're currently evaluating um those and and making sure that our numbers are correct and and matching those other numbers. So that overall thirty-one hundred number will probably fluctuate a little bit. And there might be a little bit of an adjustment as to what we ultimately ask from the state. But, you know, we're we're going through that. And then we have a a March eighth deadline to kind of respond to that. And so I'm meeting with uh ZITEL folks, our GIS folks, and and Chantel, because Chantel's actually the provider in that area that has some service in those areas that we've we've talked about already today. So um, we're going through that process. We really don't have a date for anticipated uh funding to be announced. So we still feel like our project is is very competitive. I think when it comes to, one of the factors is cost per household that the state is spending. And I think our project is like the second lowest. So that was kind of our goal, was to to be in that sweet spot a- as much as we could to try to get some of this additional funding. So we'll see uh what happens.
Steve, I heard yesterday, um, somebody that's down in Richmond, April might be, we might start seeing some announcements in April.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll hope, right?
Yeah, that'd be good. Um, and so that's really just a quick update. I know our our time is running out, but I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have there.
Any questions for Mr. Sandy on any updated information? Okay.
And and someone, I can't remember, maybe Rob had mentioned BEED.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda, I did not see you. I'm, I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine. You guys finished that. I just have an update for Mr. Mitchell.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, why don't we just go ahead with that, Amanda? Thank you.
All right, so Rob mentioned that we're starting in that Pinhook area. That is going to be our first segment that we're building out, and then we go Snow Creek and Sego right after that. So you will definitely see movement in that area. We were actually slated to start construction this Monday. We did run into some issues with our poll analysis, but we have crews and folks mobilized to get started on the twenty-sixth. So Steve, you should definitely see movement Monday. We will be starting construction. Again, we typically build about one mile per week. Let's hope we have good weather and, and we can really crank out the miles. And then Supervisor Mitchell, you should see construction in your area very soon.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, is that, sad?
Amanda.
Yes.
I know you're all working in Callaway area now. When do you anticipate all the polls, your work being done there?
The work in Callaway, is that what you said? I'm sorry, I couldn't. Um, I'm not sure, but I will do the same thing. I will ask it, I will send it to, to county staff and make sure that you, you get notified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are your questions, gentlemen, are you guys okay? Okay, any further questions for Amanda while she's still on the phone? All right, Mr. Sandy.
Yes, one final item, really the only action item that, that we were looking for at this meeting, and that was, Rob had mentioned that. There was, if you recall, we, we were initially awarded a letter of intent for additional funding for the River Street project. And they were basically, I think, waiting for the SEC to approve the project and, and some other kind of steps to occur. And so we weren't able to get access to that funding yet, but we're, we're, we're there, as Rob had mentioned. And so what we needed to do was to actually amend our contract with River Street and the West Piedmont Planning District Commission. So in your packet, there is what we're calling a Second Amendment. So it's a, it's the Second Amendment to the original contract, which all it really does is incorporate the award from 2023 for the, the VADI funding. And so that was about, I think Rob had mentioned it, it was about seven hundred more addresses. And I think it was about one point three million dollars of state funding for Franklin County. There were, you know, additional funding for Henry and Patrick as well, but for Franklin County, I think it was about one point three million of additional funding. So we would, or I would ask, request that the authority approve the amendment. Our county attorney's office has reviewed it, and I think the copy in your packet is, actually already has their signature. But if, if approved by the authority, we'll get county administrators to sign, and then we'll get it fully executed from the folks at River Street and West Piedmont.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Are there any questions from the authority? Comments, concerns? Okay, very good. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment. You have the motion in your packet.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. I make the motion to approve the Second Contract Amendment with River Street and West Piedmont PDC and authorize the authority chair and county attorney to sign the necessary documents to execute the amendment on behalf of Franklin County.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we have a voice vote, Ms. Torres?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you want a roll call?
I do, roll call, yes, thank you.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum is absent for the vote. Supervisor Thompson?
Yeah.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. Thank you very much, Maddie. Okay, that completes, Mr. Sandy, are you, you have anything else further?
No, the only thing I would mention is the, the comments that were made earlier before our attorney was here about potentially looking at the revising the structure of the authority.
Yes, there, there were some inquiry that we're going to pick up later in our work session regarding, Mr. Thompson has bought up, looking into whether we should, I don't know what the right legal ease is going to be, but basically having the authority seated by district appointments. And we will take that up this afternoon. Okay, hearing, no, no other issues that you gentlemen have? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
And second? Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you all for your attention this afternoon. And, and Rob and Brian, thank you all so much. Thank you.
So we'll call the meeting, I already did call the meeting to order. We'll have our invocation by Supervisor Smith, the pledge allegiance by Supervisor Quinn. I'll ask you all to stand, please.
I'd like to thank everyone for being with us this afternoon. We, we really appreciate the participation in our meetings. If you'll bow your head, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today very grateful for all of the blessings in our lives. Lord, I pray that you would bless this board of supervisors as we continue to do the work of Franklin County and the citizens. Lord, I pray for courage and I pray for diligence. And Lord, I also pray for all of the work that the school board is doing and all of the challenges that are confronting them. Lord, I pray that we can all come together under your blessing and make new decisions. Lord, I pray for all of the citizens in Franklin County, that you would watch over them and bless them. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Supervisor Carter, I'll ask you to make the motion there that you have.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to allow for remote participation. As authorized by Title 2.2, Chapter 37 of the Code of Virginia, I move to allow the remote participation of Supervisor Tim Tatum by telephone for today's meeting as he's unable to physically attend due to personal matter, specifically scheduled conflict.
I would second that.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call on that, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn? Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum? It's not online. Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris here, he's got an introduction to make.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With us today is Amy Rennick. Amy will be looking in as our board clerk, clerk to the board of supervisors. She started with us today. Of course, Madeline, we appreciate, appreciate Madeline Torres, who will be transitioning to part-time over the next couple of months. And certainly appreciate all the service Madeline Torres brings, but we're looking forward to working with Amy Rennick. Amy is a resident of Franklin County, lives in the Boones Mill area. She comes to us with a long career as a paralegal with Gentry Lock there in Roanoke. And Chris Daddak, for your information, Amy Rennick years ago worked for the local attorney Jim Gwynn's office many moons ago. And so we welcome, she's not a stranger then to, to local government, per se. But we welcome Amy to the team and look forward to working with Amy. I think board members will enjoy working with Amy as well, so welcome Amy.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rennick, we want to welcome your board. Look forward to working with you. Got some big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you're capable. And, and we welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. We need to approve the modified agenda as presented. Is there any additions, amendments, deletions to the agenda, as you see? I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
I will, Mr. Chair.
All right, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Chairman, since Mr. Tatum is participating by remote participation, all votes will have to be roll call votes.
We need to do a roll call vote then. He's not on there. We need to do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum? He is online, let me make sure he is muted. Tim, can you hear us? Tim? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Supervisor Tatum is online and he is able to hear us. Doesn't seem like we're able to hear him at the moment.
What did he, did you ask him for his vote?
Yes, he did text me that his vote was yes.
Okay.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, I feel like that we were short-changed in our meeting Tuesday, and for that, I appreciate everybody's indulgence. I appreciate everybody's indul- crying out loud.
Can you hear me, Maddie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I've got you, I can hear y'all.
Okay, Tim. I appreciate everybody's indulgence on Tues- Tuesday, thought the meeting, the way it went. But I want to make sure that everybody got their time in, and I don't feel like they did. So I want to take, make, take care of other matters by supervisors, and then make sure that Mr. Whitlow and then our county attorney got anything that they may did say. So I'm going to right now do other matters by supervisors to begin with. Start down on the end there. You got anything?
I spoke about the other night, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Gosh, you caught me a little bit off guard.
Well, all right, we'll come back to you.
Okay, let me think.
Let you think. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I just had one issue just to throw out there, and I don't know if there's any potential for this. I would yield to staff. As we have been having some offline discussions regarding our assessors and, you know, the various issues that have come up with whether we would continue with a, you know, third-party vendor or whether we would come in-house with it. We've just been kind of tossing that around a little bit. And one question I have is, Mr. Whitlow, do you think that there is any precedent or possibility of Franklin County partnering with somebody like Roanoke County who has their own department or a neighboring locality where we could partner up with funding and availability of those resources for more of a quasi-regional approach, maybe, if the board were to go down that road?
Excellent question, Supervisor Smith. I don't know the, the legal answer or the parameter of that, you know, to share a reassessment office from a, from another locality. There may be opportunity sharing, whether it's a third party, you know, you know, among two localities, two or more localities. I don't necessarily know if that's been done, per se. But it's certainly something, if it's the pleasure of the board, that we, we certainly could look into and research, maybe bring back some information to the board.
And Mr. Thompson, I would ask you to, you know, find the board's consensus, if there is one.
You will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tatum, do you have any other matters by supervisors?
I appreciate it. I took care of mine the other night, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, you got any other matters by supervisors? And also, you are not at the emergency meeting or the special call meeting. If you got any, anything you want to add to, I know it's already over, but I want to give you ample time.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will have the discussion of the school board resolution, and so I can save
That's gonna be, that's gonna be later on.
So I just wanted to comment about the Union Hall Village Plan. It was adopted on
How can we cut this interference?
Tim needs to mute his phone. Yeah.
Oh, perfect.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll start over. So in the January meeting, we adopted the Union Hall Village Plan, and I've been working next steps a little bit in conjunction with Steve and Chris. And I just wanted to mention some of those next steps. So the first one was just identifying a Franklin County employee who would be the point of contact going for, almost a steward or a leader for questions that there might be on the Union Hall Village Plan. And Stephanie Mathina is going to be that person. The second is, we wanted to establish a, a Union Hall Village Working Group. And I was really hoping to maybe get seven people, put it out, and actually had twenty-three people that want to participate. So just an amazing amount of participation. It's really a who's who of people within the Union Hall District and an amazingly diverse group of people. So a farmer, a healthcare worker, businessperson, a, a teacher. And so I really think that it's, we'll be able to take this group and divide it into committees and, and maybe do some staff augmentation with the county as we try to work through issues. The third item is, we'd like to have a builder-developer summit. And so the idea behind this, we would notify local builders and developers that might be interested in doing business in the Union Hall District that we're going to have this. I would envision Stephanie doing a half-hour presentation on the Union Hall Village Plan. But then the most important part of the meeting would be to open it up to the, the builders and developers to give us feedback on what they see us needing to do in order for them to be interested in working in Union Hall. The fourth of five items is, we need to work, we need to do strategic plans for some of the initiatives. So if you look at some of the initiatives, it's really hard to prioritize them. So if I pick cell as an example, well, is the only alternative to build a cell tower? That's a very expensive way to put cell in. Or maybe the alternative is to put the antenna up on the water tower, and that might be very inexpensive. And so it's taking that next step with the strategies that are inside of the Union Hall Village Plan and helping you have enough information so that you can prioritize them. And the last step is, I'm looking forward to the budget presentation by the county just to see what they have in mind as doing for next steps, not only for the Union Hall Village Plan, but my hope is that for all of the village plans, we're looking at those and trying to take some next steps. So that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. I can answer, I think, one of those questions right off. It's, I think about every supervisor in here periodically has town, what we call town hall meetings in our district. So at that time, you can do that at any time you want. And I, I mean, I don't know where down there that you can have them, but I'm sure that there's a community center or something available to have those with.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I was talking with Mrs. Sandy a little earlier, and I had got a request from one of the electoral board members that they need a space to move their machines to. Where they're at now is not the best, they say. There's no restroom facilities there and all. And I was asking if possibly we could find a place. Mr. Sandy, we were talking about right now, one of the buildings I believe we're leasing, the emergency service is about empty. He said that might be a possibility. I would like for the staff maybe to look into that, get with the mental board and see if that's a possibility.
Okay, good idea. All right, it's funny, it's funny that on my notes I have the same thing that you had, Ms. Smith, about the assessments and, and all of that. And I too would like to see staff look into it. And I would like to see what the rest of the board, how they feel about having staff in Ms. Smith's proposal for the assessments and how that was done. I know that on the bottom of each and every one, when they got their assessment, it was how, how you could go and get an appointment through the commissioner's office to do that. But I think that, that's, that's there. But I personally think that we need to look into having our own assessment team. And if we can do it through Roanoke County. I talked to, with Roanoke County when I was in Richmond last week, well, week four last now. They have eight people in their office, and they do this on a continuous basis. And Richard was telling me how that was done, the county administrator. And Franklin County, land-wise, we're bigger, but with population, we're not. And Roanoke County has a lot more commercial buildings than Franklin County does, so that would have it down a whole lot. But I think that if we would do that, now, of course, I don't know how much that was going, would increase the budget, but it's still, you know, what was it, eight hundred to a, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars every time we did an assessment. And this would be on an ongoing basis, and it would may help us in the future where we stand. So I concur with that, what you said there about that. I think it's an excellent idea, and I was going to bring that up. And I don't have the rest of you, but for my part, and I think for Ms. Smith's part, it's not going to hurt anything for staff to look into it. And I know, I know right now that staff is And I know, I know right now that staff is extremely busy with the budget. And nobody's expecting it to happen tomorrow. But to look into is, how about the rest of y'all? Y'all okay with that, or you got questions or comments?
My first question with that, I would want to know what Roanoke County's budget is for their reassessment office. What they're spending a year just to keep it. I wouldn't want us to go down a path, you know, we paid a little over a million dollars to do it for every four years, and they're doing it continuously. What'd you say, eight people?
They said eight people is what he told me.
And I think they reassess every two years, Nick, I think.
I think that's right.
Is it every year or two years, maybe?
Well, it's on an ongoing basis now, but I think they were doing it-
Every year.
I think it's every year.
It's every year.
So, I mean, if I may, Mr. Chair. I know we've kind of talked about whether, you know, we'll have a discussion about reassessing more often, you know, to try to keep the highs and lows, you know, out of the, out of the periods of time. If we were to go to two years, obviously, you know, the amount of money, you know, is going to double from what we're doing every four years. So, I think part of, I think, Mr. Whitlow, if I'm correct, part of your research will probably include looking at costing different models out so that we can just get a, it doesn't have to be exact.
Right.
But I think, I think there's going to be a couple of things that need to come into that discussion in terms of, are we going to be looking to reassess more often? And how this cost-sharing models might look, excuse me.
I guess my point is just maybe see with that, just for comparison, look at Roanoke County. Because I've heard it is a significant budget to do that.
Exactly.
I've heard it's a whole lot of money to do that. And keep in mind that we get a lot of citizens from Roanoke County because of our attractive tax rate.
They've got three county attorneys. On staff.
On staff.
Yeah, we don't need-
For Stat Act, did you hear that? Mr. Chairman, if I can just make one more comment, I know-
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah. With regard to the reassessments, I think if we were to, I think just the mere fact that we're going to research this, the citizens that I'm hearing from, from really all over the county, they don't have a lot of confidence in, in the, not just the amounts, but it being conducted. You know, the assessors themselves aren't having any real skin in the game here. So, you know, I think any movement that we make to research these things will hopefully re-instill some confidence that we're trying to do the right thing.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tatum, you've got a comment you want to add? Mr. Tatum?
He's unmuted.
While we're waiting on that, I asked our county attorney, do you have any comment or anything that I know was short, cut short the other day? Have you got anything to add?
Can you hear me, Ronnie?
Hold on just a minute, Mr. Tatum.
Okay.
No, Chairman, but thank you for asking.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Tatum, you've got a comment? It seems to be a train in the background.
I just want to say, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, with the train noise in the background.
Okay, we're driving down the highway. I just want to make a quick comment that I agree with you totally, you and Ms. Smith. I think we need to, one, show our citizens that we aim to earn their respect and confidence in our assessment process. And I think that we need to look at doing it more often, because right now, if the market plummets tomorrow, we're stuck for the next four years with this crazy high assessment rate. And I think we need to go to more often so that we can better follow the market and get a more accurate assessment based on what the market really is and not, not get stuck because of an anomaly like we're in right now.
Thank you, sir.
I have a comment.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So, a couple of comments about the assessment. I, like all of you, have been feeling a lot of calls about the assessments. And one of the comments I'll make is that there's just a lot of misunderstanding, misinformation. People just don't understand how it works. And I've been able to lay out a few bullet points that I've sent on to, say, HOA presidents about how the whole process works, and it's really helped alleviate some of the concerns. And I think it's really given some of these people more confidence in Womper Eames and the work that they've done. Secondly, I had asked Margaret to give me some data from Womper Eames about the 179 neighborhoods that they set up in order to do an apples-to-apples comparison. She was able to give that to me. I forwarded that information on to some people. And again, it's given people a lot, a lot more confidence in what's going on. They see that they don't have a dog in the fight, they're just trying to make this accurate. And I'll just cite one little interesting data point I found in that. The neighborhood program, I think, is really interesting. They took Contentment Island, though, and they divided even Contentment Island into two neighborhoods, the cottages and the houses. And one went up 70%, and one went up 48%. And I thought, wow, that's, that's really interesting, that even within one neighborhood, they divided it into two. So, that's a little, a little bit about what I've been trying to do to, to help people better understand what's going on with the process. Then, regarding moving forward, I really have not seen any incentive to do it more often. We, we have, every year, we'll, we'll look at what the county needs to run. The county will look at the assessed values, and we adjust the tax rate up and down. And I just can't see an incentive to spend more money to do this more frequently than every four years, just my opinion. And maybe there's something out there that I haven't seen that'll be interesting. Now, whether we should contract this work out or take it in-house, that's really the numbers. I can't speak to that, I don't have an opinion on it. I would look to do it the least expensive way. So, that's it, thank you.
I think the, the here was not to say that we were going to spend more money or anything. We were just getting staff to look in it, to bring us back to study, to see what it was going to be, and not to make any kind of decision today. And then I have one other thing that I would like to finish with my thing, is the broadband authority that we just come out of the meeting. I'd like for staff to look into it and see what we can do to put this out to like a committee from each one of our areas. And it'd be seven on there instead of the board supervisors being the authority itself. I don't even know if it's legal, if it's possible. That's going to be something where staff to do with the county attorney to figure that out. Now, with that being said, I'd like to see what the rest of them, if it's okay to do that, because if I'm the Lone Ranger, then it's a moot point, we don't need to do that. But how the rest of y'all feel? I mean, are you confident that, that you're okay with making, I mean, the ultimate decision when it comes to spending money and things of that nature is going to come back to this board anyway? And with that, I feel like that I could find somebody in Boone District, a whole lot more qualified to look into this and to do that than myself. But, anyway, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only comment I have about that is I would be concerned when we get in a time situation where we need to make a decision and vote right at that broadband meeting. And that's happened a few times in the past. So, if we have a committee and it gets tied up in that committee, and then it has to come to us, that, that would be my only concern.
I suppose if it got to that point, just taking off the top of my head, we could always have an emergency meeting. I know that's a trip in here, but we could do it that a way, but that is a good point taken.
I'm new, so how much, I mean, once the broadband's complete, what is the completion date estimated at this point?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
What is the estimated completion date on the broadband at this point?
I don't think that they can give us an answer to that. I mean, it was a lot of stuff, it's a lot of variables in there. And I don't think that there's an answer to that, is it, Mr. Sandy?
No, I certainly couldn't give you a firm answer, but, you know, we have the two projects we heard about earlier. They're anticipated to be done. One was anticipated to be done this year, one was anticipated to be done the end of next year. We have that pending application that we put out, which we may not hear anything until April or May. And so, that will probably be a two-to-three-year timeframe. So, we're probably four, five years, you know, really, to, to really get close to covering everybody everywhere.
Once it's complete, will we still have an authority here to follow it? I mean, is it going to stay in place, pass, the completion date, I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
I think you'd have the authority, if it's, you know, if you still have the authority, I think it's still in place, but it may be more like our IDA where it just kind of meets on a less regular kind of opportunity. So, as there's grant opportunities or different decisions that had to be made, then the group would maybe meet. But, yeah, I think, once we got five, six years down the road, there's probably less, you know, less need to meet as often, I guess.
Thank you. That's where I was going with it. You know, if we were finishing up, it's going to be disbanded, you know, very soon. I'd say stay where we at, you know, like we are. But I'm open to that.
That's, that's what I was envisioning, that if it got to the point, let me, let me, let me put this right here. I don't mean this in any way disrespectful to Ms. Smith or anybody else, you know, as chairman on that. It was just, I was trying to find a way to be more effective and efficient and more on top of it because of, you know, what, what little bit I know about broadband and everything. And I don't know about the rest of you at all, but I would just like to look into that. Mr. Mitchell?
I'm, I don't mind doing it now, but I would be in support of that, and solely because I have someone in my district that would be perfect for it, who works contracts through River Street, and that's the project in my area. So, it's much more his forte than mine. I'm open to whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not agree with disbanding the authority. We are probably three to four years into our broadband plan rollout. And to ask citizens at this point to come in through board appointment, to come in and have to play catch-up with our rollout. And plus, I believe we'll have to yield to Mr. Dadak. I think there's some statutory authority relative to broadband authorities in the state code that we would need to look at. I truly believe because of the nature of the amount of dollars being spent and the commitments that we have, as a broadband authority, have made, and the agreements that we are in and currently committed to, to think about turning all of that authority over to an appointed board at this point in, in the lifespan of our rollout. I just can't support that. I think, you know, this is not requiring a lot of our time in terms of our workload. We might have a broadband meeting every other month or just when it's needed. We are not limited, or we don't have to have one every month, and they're usually about an hour long. I have said since I got elected that I think that our authority could greatly benefit from us appointing a group, a small group, maybe two or three, four people of advisors that we could appoint as an authority to bring expertise to the table in an advisory capacity to the authority to pick up that expertise. Things that we as laypeople in the environment don't really know about. So, I don't support disbanding the authority for those reasons. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, this is a new initiative. I don't have an opinion on us versus a committee tonight. However, I would like to add that I really think we need a technical expert on the team. Whether it's, we're the team or a committee's the team, we don't have a technical expert. And it'd be really nice to have a broadband technical expert on the team to offer their commentary.
So, I think the majority, then, it was more of a majority to see if we can even do it. We don't even know if we can do it to begin with and go from there. There's no decision to be made, but it, I think it's enough here to authorize staff to look into it, to see. I mean, we're talking now with the budget thing, it's going to be in the middle of summer before it goes. I don't even know if it's feasible at that time, but, so, I think with the majority, for at least to move forward and to see if it's a feasible thing to do. Thank you. All right, Mr. Whitlow, do you have any other matters that you need to address that we didn't get taken care of Tuesday?
No, sir. I think the next couple, Mr. Sandy, on the modified agenda today, has a couple of updates. It's just happened in the last, some good news, some, some grant funds from FEMA. And then the carryover item from the other day for some clarification on the public safety offices. But I don't have anything-
You don't have anything to add?
No, no, sir.
All right, Mr. Sandy?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of matters. The first one, really quick, as Chris mentioned, we got a bit of good news just earlier in the week that the FEMA grant we applied for to help, help us with some radio communication issues. We applied for this back in 2021. We just got word that we are going to receive funding, over a million dollars in funding. And so, that's the good news. The, the bad news at this point is I don't have those documents in hand. So, I don't have something for you to officially approve right now. But I want to get it on your radar because it's a very critical project. As I said, it's been about three years in the waiting. And I'm holding Jeff, our radio communications guy, I'm holding him back to say, you know, we can't replace those microwave equipment just yet. You know, so, it's been something that he's been, I think he's out of Band-Aids. I think he's out of everything he can do to, to keep the system running for our county-wide radio system. But we're in dire need of some upgrades to our microwave system, which kind of keeps all those towers connected to dispatch and to our first responders. And so, we're very anxious to get, to be able to get him going and get that project started. We've got the quote, and we've got the contract for the microwave work itself is about seven, I think it's about $720,000 worth of work that, that we have and we need to have done. And we've got everything kind of lined up. We just need to get those documents and then get your approval. And so, really, I'm kind of here now just saying, hey, you're going to hear from me again pretty soon, you know, at one of your meetings in March, to say, hey, can you really, can you approve this so we can kind of get moving and get this implemented? So, we're anxious to get started. We just, we had hoped maybe we would have the paperwork available, and maybe we could get the approval. But we'll keep pushing. VDEM, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, is preparing those documents. We do have the, the, as I mentioned, the contract documents. We'll make sure Jim and Chris from our attorney's office clear those and clear the grant agreements, and then we'll bring those back to you in a future meeting. You know, I'm hopeful that maybe we could even do that if it's not the regular meeting in March. But if it's one of the meetings that it'd only take a minute or two, but it will save us a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of heartburn, a lot of headache, hopefully. And again, this is something we really wanted to do about two years ago. But we've been just kind of holding off because if we can get the federal government to pay half of it, then that was our preference. So, that was really just in way of an update, to just get that on your radar. And, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And Jeff's definitely the technical expertise, if there's any technical questions.
If I understand from an earlier conversation that you and I had, this just came in yesterday?
It was earlier this week that we got the notice. So, we got an email and we got verbal notice, but we don't actually have the contract documents to sign off on yet. So, I didn't want to give any information that wasn't accurate at this point until we had that in hand. But again, I just wanted to make sure it's, it's on the radar, and when you see me come back, you'll kind of know what, why is he pushing that so hard? It's, it's urgent that we get those microwaves done and keep that schedule on. It's about a four-week process. I think we've kind of outlined, once we get the equipment in hand, to go to each tower and make those replacements for each, for each of the towers. And that, that $700 and some thousand dollar quote includes all that. So, we've got the third party to provide the materials and all the work to make that happen and make sure it goes hopefully seamlessly.
So, anybody got any questions?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair. Mr. Sandy, is this grant perhaps, does, is it cyclical? Will we have an opportunity to go back and, and, or is it a one-time grant?
We, we do. They have various pots of money, so this is actually coming out of what they call the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So, they have different pots, and we've tapped a couple of pots, actually, to try to get this funded. And this one, we've finally been successful. There are other programs, like the Assistance to Firefighter Grants, which you guys approved Tuesday for us to apply for another grant. A lot of that will, allows us to get some radio equipment, the actual handheld and mobile radios, as well as other firefighting equipment. And so, we strategically trying to tap all these different pots of funding. The other one that we've also tapped for hazard mitigation, if you recall, the Faram Mercantile. Mr. Tatum's not here, but that, that's the program we actually applied for funding as well for that, to replace the pipes, the culverts, water and sewer lines there. If you recall, that the entrances had to be closed, and they had to shut down the mercantile because the entrance was unsafe due to some flooding issues and drainage issues. And so, we actually applied to that funding source as well. The, the good thing with those funding sources sometimes is if there's actually declared disasters, there'll be designated pots of fund, funding for localities to try to get to. So, yes and no, I guess, is, is the answer, is some of these are, they're all cyclical, but some of them, you know, require different types of work to be done for, for you to be eligible for those.
I greatly appreciate the diligence of grant submissions. It's a lot of work, but there are good payoffs, and thank you all very much for that work.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Would you like to address now the, uh, Mr. Mitchell had the attachment one on the consent agenda pulled about the relocation?
Yes, sir. So, so in your packet, uh, for today in your modified agenda, you have, um, just a, a one-page memo and then you have the attachment that was actually in your packet Tuesday relative to this topic. Um, and if you recall, um, Supervisor Mitchell had a few questions, uh, that he had raised and, and we decided we would hold it over to, to this meeting. Um, and so I've just put together a little memo, just kind of addressing some of those. And I've talked to, to Mr. Mitchell and actually several of you as well about, uh, just kind of the timeframe. I think that was the initial question is, is what is the timeframe here? And what we've estimated to, to do this work is, I'm saying six months. I hope that's a, maybe a long estimate, but we're, we're giving ourselves six months to, to be able to make these changes. And that would be, um, preparing the Franklin Center, the lower level of the Franklin Center for the public administration staff. So that's mostly office space and, and training space and, and so forth there. Some cubicles, uh, things like that, some, uh, security access for doors, those sorts of things. Not much, or not really any, uh, walls going up or walls coming down in that, uh, particular space. It actually works really well, uh, for, for this intended use. And then the other part of this project is, is relocating the Emergency Operations Center, which is currently in the Public Safety Building to the back of this building, uh, where the reassessment hearings are actually happening, uh, right now. Utilizing that space as the, uh, Emergency Operations Center and kind of the, the Communication Center, um, for public safety. And, and part of that, what that does is anytime there's an emergency situation, if the, uh, 911 center happens to go down for some reason, this is the backup and this is the location that would serve as the, um, the operation center in those cases. Um, so when we have a tornado like we did a few years ago and we call the emergency, uh, folks together, that's kind of the heart, the heart of the, uh, Operation Center. There might be a mobile unit as well, but the, the, the Emergency Operations Center is where the various, um, agencies and so forth come together and meet, do their planning, do their, um, you know, all their kind of things there. And so we would, the, the bigger part of the project, I guess what I'm going at is the bigger part of the project is relocating that EOC over to here, which will require some electrical work, some, uh, IT work. Will require, uh, creating a new, uh, cabinet and server room. And so even though that's not a ton of work, but it will require a little bit of additional work there. And so of the two pieces of the project, that one's probably going to take a little bit longer just to, to make that transition over. And since it's a, uh, Emergency Operations Center, we obviously want to make it as seamless of, of transition as we can to, to relocate some of the equipment from over there into this, into this building and, and have that be as seamless as possible. So long-winded answer to the question about how long? It's about a six-month, uh, process that we think it'll take to transition. And so I know there were some questions yesterday, uh, that, that came up. And there are, just to reiterate, this was in the, the packet Tuesday, but to reiterate, we currently have leases for those two buildings on Franklin Street. Uh, they're three-year leases and they were run through June of 2025. And so we are a little ahead of the game, but I wouldn't say we're too far ahead of the game, you know, of, of planning and trying to be ready. Um, if, if you recall, I think last year before we renewed the leases, we had conversations about it, but we just weren't ready. We just didn't have a, a good plan in place. And so, um, now we have a plan that will work. And, uh, spoke with, uh, Mr. Oliver, the property owner this morning, he, he's actually here, um, about kind of our plan and what we're looking to do. And, um, he was very comfortable with, with working with us if, if we move forward, about talking about the options of getting out of the lease early, you know, mutually agreeable solution there. And they're also, uh, planning to now go ahead and start marketing that property, knowing that, that we do have a plan kind of moving forward. Um, and he did want to reiterate that if they were to sell the property before we were fully vacated, that he would work with the new owner to make sure that they honored the timeframe that we needed to, to finish the work that we have to do. And so, um, I feel very comfortable, uh, with, with, um, our conversation today and, and that I think we'll, we can work well together on this to, to make that transition, um, you know, work out. So we, we're seeking the approval for the funding and the, the plan of, of moving those two. Um, we have an option where we could start almost immediately and, and work with the Olivers on the, the, the existing lease. Or if we wanted to just maintain the lease till the full term, we could start construction later this year and, and work on having that transition completed by June. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on that or any additional thoughts.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thanks, Steve. Um, my point about this was, and I'm fine, if we can work a deal with Mr. Oliver, to get out of the lease early and get moved to the, to the Franklin Center and to the assessment office, that's fine with me and it's, and that's good. Um, I'm all for getting out of leases and saving the county money. But we need to have a timeline. When we pull $150,000 out of the capital reserve account to spend on something like this, but then we nickel and dime things all the time and act to the public about money, that does not send a good signal for me. So I'm all fine for it, but I want to see a timeline of when we're going to be out of the lease, when we plan on to be moved into the others before I agree to releasing the money.
Okay, I'm open up. If there's any more comments by the, any more board, Mr. Quinn?
I, I have a comment. So I do understand Nick's concern, particularly the one you voiced, uh, last meeting about it being temporary. However, it's such a, a perfect space that I could see us sitting here 10 years from now and they're still there and haven't moved. Um, I think the, the return on investment is pretty good on this. Uh, you know, once you get out of the lease and, and you've made that expense, I think the return on investment is good. So yes, we're making a capital expense, but, uh, longer term, we're saving money. I, one thing that's not so evident, the infrastructure requirement for these groups is huge. You know, the backup, the IT group, everything is right here. It's already in place. I like that part a lot. And then I think there's a hidden synergy with the staff being located downstairs. You guys are up here and just that ability for people to interact in a way that they don't, if the buildings are separated by some distance. So I like that part. And then we're using available space that, that's down there that's not being used. So just overall, I really like the initiative.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing that being said, on, uh, in your agenda on page, uh, three, there are some, uh, board actions. We've got to take action. Uh, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the relocation of the Public Safety Administrative Offices to the Franklin Center and the relocation of the Emergency Operations Center to the Government Center.
Need a second? Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote? Is Mr. Tatum still on the line?
Uh, no, sir. He lost connection. He said he's in a rural area, but we'll call back later in the meeting.
Will you repeat that, please? Said he's in a rural area?
Yes, he's in a rural area and doesn't have connectivity, but he will call back later in our meeting.
Thank you.
Ready to do the roll call?
Yes, please.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
Yes.
Supervisor Jameson?
Yes.
Supervisor Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Supervisor Tatum is absent for the vote. Chairman Thompson?
Yes. All right, according to our, that's to be unanimous, doesn't it? With, with, uh, in the recent, correct me if I'm wrong, in our recent, uh, board rules.
That's to modify the agenda.
To modify the agenda. Only?
Correct.
Okay, sir. All right, so, so moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
And Brian, you might be the one to answer this for me. Um, how much currently sits in the capital reserve account that this money's being pulled from?
The capital reserve for this account would be just over a million dollars is sitting in that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Carter. Brian Carter, if you'll come for it, we'll start our budget work session. Is everybody okay? You need to take a five-minute break. I know it started pretty quick. Let's take a five-minute break right here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So for our budget work session this afternoon, we're, we're going to focus on a little bit of operating and a lot more capital, uh, just to give you an idea of some of the items facing us that, uh, Mr. Whitlow and, and staff will be working on, uh, over the next week and a half as we prepare to present you a budget on March 5th, a proposed budget. So, so just to, to remind, rehash, um, a little bit for the current year budget that, that we're, um, that we're currently in, we, we did balance the budget. No tax increases, no property tax rate increases. Um, it, it is a maintenance budget. It is a stopgap funding budget. If you remember, we balanced this budget with $2 million in interest revenue that will eventually go away. Uh, as, as far as the, um, the capital side, if you remember, we were not able to balance the capital budget without the use of one and a half million dollars in reserves. And that was just to do the, the bare minimum. And so while, and you've heard a little bit in, in our, uh, monthly updates to you on the interest rates, not really sure when they will start reducing. The Federal Reserve probably will not till at least the summer. All of that obviously is indicative of the status of the economy. And so for us, we're going to be looking at where they may go 18 months from now essentially. And in order to get us to the end of next fiscal year and what that might be for planning rate. So, but it will not go up, I guess would be the point. So we will have to, at some point in this year's budget, come up with and replace some lost interest earnings. So, uh, we also added items to the budget post-adoption. Uh, one of those was, uh, 200,000 in additional fire EMS coverage. That was because of the SAFER grant that we did not ultimately receive in order to enhance 24/7 coverage. We also added, uh, full-time, eight new full-time school resource officers. We added supplemental funding to come off Attorney's Office and we added a half-year, mid-year, uh, recently voted on by the Board, an animal control officer. So total mid-year additions have been 655,000. That of course will come off of the top for our budget planning for next fiscal year. Uh, another thing to keep in mind, uh, we don't have the official grant awards yet, but the school resource officer grants through the Department of Criminal Justice Services, the local match is based off of the LCI. So now, if you remember, we had planned on 1.2 million in local costs phased in. That's going to be higher for next year. We're going to lose, we are projecting to lose about $200,000 in grant funding because of the new LCI. So we are now going to have to add $200,000 on top of the 655 in order to keep our SRO program. So as far as budget pressures, uh, we are looking at, uh, departmental requests and these are the unfiltered requests. Of course, staff always goes through. We, we bring you a balanced budget. We will do so again. Uh, but to give you an idea of the need, the operating requests are 7.2 million dollars in new spending requests and, and an additional 2 million in new position requests. And so the 9.2 million total across what our departments have requested in, in their need to, to accomplish the services that ultimately we, uh, we prioritize as a county. Same inflationary factors are, are continuing to exist. Some moderate, have moderated. Of course, fuel prices have gone back up fairly significantly in the last four to six weeks. So that, that continues to be difficult to project. We know about our inflation on capital. We know about the inflation on our maintenance contracts or equipment or vehicles. CSA continues to be a, a heavy, uh, cost driver. Uh, that they also have inflationary factors that are driving that in addition to the need of our particular, um, children in the county. We do need to look at additional staffing. Depends on priority, uh, what we want as a locality, uh, for 24/7 EMS coverage, we are not there. There is no redundancy built into the system. When staff are out for sickness, for training, for vacation time, uh, that it has to have, either has to be covered with overtime or trucks aren't able to embark from, uh, once, uh, well, after a 911 call. So we, we could look at that, the budget, that would be an additional position request. And so that we're looking at that, but I think it's going to be priority of what is that of the board? Do we want 24/7 coverage existing? How, where does that look like? How many stations? We've, uh, talked about the decline in school enrollment and so that of course is a pressure on our budget as well because of the drop in 3.7 million in anticipated state funding. The increased population in the Western Virginia Regional Jail and also the Juvenile Detention Center, those are going to come with, uh, expensive price tags this year as we phase in those costs. So just a reminder, the, the higher, it's a, it's a pay-for-play. So basically the higher our population is in these facilities compared to the other member localities, the more we pay for the operating cost of that facility. And ours are higher, so we are expecting a significant increase in both of those operations in the next fiscal year's budget. Uh, we would continue to like to phase in the SRO budgetary costs so that we do not have to come up with 1.2 million dollars in three or four years, but it's built in periodically over a period of about three or four years. Uh, we mentioned, I mentioned already the $200,000 that we're anticipating losing next year in the grants. So as far as, uh, our labor pressures, we are looking at still a competitive labor market. Of course, adequate staffing. Uh, we are a very lean operation. There's very little redundancy in our departments. If somebody's down, a lot of times the work doesn't get done or a lot of our staff are working several. As far as the, the compensation plan, it has helped. Uh, we are more competitive. Um, I would say that, uh, we would look at ECOLA. And we've mentioned a little bit to you from any cost of living increases between the governor's budget and what right now is floating around the General Assembly. We try and mirror what the state does. Of course, we will be looking at that as staff. We'll have more detail on some of these items in future slides. Right now there has, uh, both, uh, houses, uh, both houses, the house, the House and the Senate, uh, both chambers of the General Assembly have passed the minimum wage law. And so it's now, I, it could, I would not foresee it, but it could get, um, removed in, as part of the negotiation between both, but likely to make it to the governor's desk. Uh, so to remind you of what that looks like, if that passes and the governor signs off, January 1st, 2025, minimum wage would go from $12 an hour now to $13.50. And in January 1st, 2026, minimum wage would go to $15 an hour. The cost to the county, when you factor in the compression, will likely be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in order to implement that. That is a significant increase. Now, we could only, we could phase it, we, we could manage it, but when you're talking about taking the bottom and implementing a $15 minimum wage from $12 and what that does to all of the pay grades above that, that's a significant increase. And if you remember, we just adjusted for that in our compensation plan. So we would be back in a similar situation. So if that passes, while maybe not critical for next fiscal year, that is a significant increase for the locality if we want to actually keep pay competitive and keep the, um, compensation plan appropriate. So, uh, we, we continue to look at market compensation adjustments to keep that compensation plan going and accurate. Health insurance renewal, we will be facing an increase this year. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And then our VRS retirement, our rate for VRS, the retirement pension plan, that's a benefit for employees. Uh, it went up, uh, along with the health insurance credit that we, uh, we implemented this year. So the increase is anticipated to be $75,000 on that line item.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
I have a question on, on that slide.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. So the, um, additional 7.2 million, I'm assuming that does not include any of the items in red, that those would all be on top of the 7.2 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
That's correct. So a little bit more compensation and benefits. So we continue to have recruitment and retention challenges. It's just the nature of the labor market that we are in. There are not enough people to fill open positions. The, our compensation plan has allowed us flexibility to be competitive. Uh, today we have about 22 open positions. That's, just to put in perspective, we have about 400 full-time employees. That's about a 5% vacancy rate. That's, that's pretty normal. That's not insurmountable. Um, but i- it is for the sake of helping us. But the point of that is our HR staff has been in a constant state of recruitment. It's, it's every week, it's advertising, it's interviewing, it's, you hire somebody, somebody leaves. You have to start the process. Um, thank goodness and we thank the board for, uh, doubling the HR staff. So we have two people now in prior budgets, uh, because I don't know that we would be able to keep up if we, if we were just doing it on one. Uh, so we do thank you for that. But even with two, it's, it's really difficult to keep up because it is a constant state of, um, of recruitment. Um, to give you an idea, if we, if we look at ECOLA, so the state had put, we're, I'm going to average 3% in, in their proposal from the General Assembly that we're seeing right now. So every 1% in ECOLA is $275,000, uh, for full and part-time is what we would be looking at. So if we were looking to try and match that, you can see where that would take us. That's almost three-quarters of a million dollars essentially, so. So our insurance renewal, uh, it looks like, while better than last year, if you remember, last year's a 25% increase, better. It's, um, 7.6% right now. Uh, if we absorbed all of that, that would If we absorbed all of that, that would be a $412,000 increase to the budget. Staff will be looking at that as far as how we cost-share that, if any, with employees, what the plan design may be, should there be changes there to maybe bring that 7.6% increase down a little further. Those items will be brought to the Board at the March 19th meeting for actual adoption of rates. But as we are planning for the budget, what is presented, of course, on March 5th will be our anticipation of what the recommendation would be for those benefits. So anything above or below that would impact, of course, the budget.
Brian, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On this Anthem, on this health insurance, do you all get competitive bids on our insurance? Or how do you all go after that?
We do, not annually. And the reason for that is that you would stop getting bids if we went out to bid annually. The reason that the numbers work for your larger insurers, it has to be a book of business for a period of time. If I, if my memory serves me correctly, this is the final year of, this renewal for the new fiscal year coming up would be the final year of the Anthem contract. So we would have to go out to issue a request for proposals for a health insurance provider next fiscal year.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We typically award that in a three-to-five-year window. I think we would be entering the fifth year on that. Part of the challenge for us in this area of the state, really, is the lack of competition. And there are really only two significant, with that having a realistic network for our employees and their families, that would be competitive. And so that's, that was the case last time. I'm sure that's going to be the case this time, but we are up for renewal in about a year.
Brian, before you go.
Yes, sir.
In the past, we've talked about the availability of insurance for our retirees.
Mm-hmm.
It's been brought back to the cost of, has to do with the population and all of that. Has there been anything looked into this recently about the possibility of insurance available to our retirees, instead of just saying, when you retire, that's it?
Well, we offer insurance to retirees until the age of 65, and when they become Medicare eligible. So if you are on a county plan now as an employee and retire, you have the option to take, continue the insurance. However, you would pay that premium there, and so the employee, we would invoice the employee and they would pay that. So it, it can be cost prohibitive because of the cost. But they do allow that, we do allow that as a benefit till 65. The reason that we capped it at 65 is regarding an accounting statement, because basically we have to have an actuarial study that calculates the liability of that. So if we don't cap it to 65, we would have a liability of the millions of dollars. And so I wasn't here at the time, but I was in another locality that did the same calculation, and so that would be why we cap it at 65. But we are required to offer that to retired employees for the active insurance plan.
I understand that.
Okay.
I was talking more for a supplemental policy.
Okay.
You know, the employee has to pay it.
Yes, sir.
Something available, instead of just saying.
For health insurance in particular, yes, sir. Thank you for clarifying. We offer voluntary benefits, but we do not offer, and I don't know that I have seen a supplemental plan that you can offer with another private plan. You can with Medicare. That's something we could bring up. We have a separate provider for voluntary benefits, and we can reach out to our consultant and ask about that when we look to renew.
May I?
Yes, sir. Be happy to. Okay. Okay. So that was it for the operation. Really want to focus on capital today. We have several other pressures. A lot of the items we mentioned to you will have dollar amounts attached to them. We're continuing to work through the budget, meeting with departments and trying to streamline operations. But really wanted to spend a lot of time on capital unless there are any other questions on operating before we move on.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before you leave operating, Brian, two observations for myself. I would like, and I'm just doing this as a heads-up because of time, I would like to, with the positions that are being requested, I would like for staff to provide us with a prioritization of need based upon what the organization, if, you know, the administrative staff would see as a prioritized list against the departmental request. And the second thing is, with the EMS redundancy line item that you've presented, I would like to have more information provided so we can make an informed decision about what do we currently have and where. And then, again, the prioritization of where we need to put the first levels of redundancy and what that's going to cost, and would we need to trend it in over time?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Anyone? Okay, Mr. Carter.
All right. So for our capital improvements and our maintenance, we've talked about our need for capital for several years, and I think we're gonna, we really want to drive a few things home for where we are. And so you heard a little bit about our radio system. We're going to talk about that. We're to the point now where there are just some capital needs that have to be addressed. How we get there, we will be part of the budget process, but we really have streamlined our capital as much as we can over the last two or three years. So just to remind you, we have an annual recurring capital transfer of 2.4 million dollars that funds the entire capital program for the county. So in next fiscal year, we had 15.4 million in requests just from departments. There was another 12.2 million in capital requests from our volunteers. So total requests unfunded, doing the calculation, is about 24.3 million dollars. Some of those can be prioritized and pushed. These are the requests, these are the raw requests, want to be clear. We always have this every year. Staff make sure we bring you a balanced budget, but we're going to have to get real this year of, are we really going to do this or not? And I think it's time to have that conversation, and if we cut things out of our capital plan, that's all right. But I think when we look at, over the, especially through March, after we present a budget, we're really going to have to dig down into some of these capital requests. So for the five-year CIP, there were 61.4 million dollars, and about 49 and a half million were unfunded based on that 2.4 million in recurring revenue that we're looking at. So to break it down in a few more categories, again, when we present the budget, you'll have a line item, CIP, and all of these, but I don't think that would be the best use of time today, given our constraints. But to give you a higher-level picture, for a five-year look, just to give you an idea, so our fire and EMS apparatus, our fire trucks and our ambulances, right now, the request over five years is 8.1 million dollars. And we know the inflationary cost that goes on with those, but we can, of course, vet those and the cost that may be in our determination of the priority and need. We mentioned the radio system. This is one that realistically has to happen. How we fund it, we will certainly present you an option, but that's 5.7 million dollars over, over five years. That is an end-of-life must-replace in order to keep our emergency radio system functioning. Other items for fire EMS equipment, turnout gear, self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, as you might hear abbreviated, all of those items are 1.2 million dollars over five years.
Can I make a?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Matt.
Can I make a comment about this fire and EMS apparatus replacement, 8.1 million?
Yes, sir.
In the past, the Director of Public Safety has come in here and said, we want this Pierce Arrow, whatever truck it is, it's $2 million. If we don't order it today, it's going to go up another 400,000.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to vote for this stuff anymore. When they come in here at the last minute, I think this Board should be presented with two or three options on purchasing these trucks in the future so that we can make an intelligent decision based on price and quality. I'm not going to be strong-armed in the future buying these trucks. I just want to put that out there. I know we're in the process of getting a new Director of Public Safety, but I'm done with this shooting from the hip buying these trucks because it is becoming an untenable number, and it's getting more and more every year. And I'm just saying that for the benefit of the rest of the Board and the general public.
Yes, sir.
I agree. I agree with you. Now, this is just the radio communications. My question is, fire and EMS, you're going to get the law enforcement, or their radios wearing out too?
This would include law enforcement radios as well. This would include law enforcement radios as well.
This includes law enforcement radios.
Yes, sir. This is the entire emergency radio system.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Brian, is that 911, too? I'm not sure I understand some of these distinctions.
Well, 911 centering things, what we're talking about is the emergency radios, the towers, the infrastructure.
Okay.
That, so 911 dispatch would operate off of those, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Brian, does that 8.1 million include what the town requests?
No, it does not. That is our department request alone. Yes, sir. So I guess that would be 10 million, basically, by the time you're done with it. Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Chairman, and just a quick, on the fire apparatus piece, I concur with Mr. Carter's remarks. I have been waiting to see some movement on, you know, we've been doing the work sessions on public safety over the last year or two. I really want to see what work we're accomplishing with the replacement schedule itself, and as Mr. Thompson said, you know, and Mr. Carter looking at options, and, you know, just because it's your turn, I want to make sure that, you know, I need a confidence level that the apparatus are being evaluated for lifespan for, and the level of, you know, responses that they have on an annual basis, and that we do have options, and that that schedule is based on more than just, you know, turn, it's my turn. And I have, you know, my respect for our public safety folks is through the roof, but we've got to be very cognizant, and you all can see why, of the millions of dollars of need that we have in front of us and the need to make sure we're being as efficient as we can. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, ma'am.
Is anybody else? Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. There we go. All right. So general properties, which mainly facilities that we're looking at. So over the next five years, we're looking at HVAC replacements of about a million dollars, about 500,000 in roof replacements or repair, courthouse renovations or maintenance. We're certainly looking at some of that. We have a lot of aging buildings and facilities. There's about a million dollars anticipated for that five years. Fleet replacement, now this is outside of public safety, but any other general fleet replacement, which General Properties manages for the county, and so they're not getting any cheaper. We do try and streamline, but that's a significant number. The YMCA, so there's a 1.6 million dollar cost on that. That's a roof. HVAC, that's paving for the parking lot. That's in dire need. We did a study for that about five years ago, and we haven't fixed anything on it, hardly. We did the pool, and so, but this is getting to a point of, you're going to start probably getting structural damage in the building if we don't start doing something. Jail repairs and modernization, 850,000, same thing. The jail is a very old facility. There have really been very few improvements made, and there's a lot of things that just need to be upgraded and updated and repaired or placed. So for solid waste, and a lot of these, just want to make clear, these are maintaining what we have today. These are not necessarily new requests. We're not adding equipment. We're talking about replacing or maintaining what we have today. So I want to be sure, all these millions of dollars that we're talking about, they're not new. This is just replacing our existing infrastructure. So for solid waste, we're looking at 1.3 million, and we pay for that now in engineering and compliance. That's an annual recurring cost for our landfill. We have a contractor that does that for us, DEQ, very important that we keep up with that. The equipment lease that we recently entered into, that would add to that as a three-year lease, Fire Memorizes, about 1.3 million over the five-year window. Would need to replace two roll-off trucks, cost of 400,000. We're looking, to save money, rather than buying new, is to do and implement a rebuild/replace program. So basically, the way I understand it, could be wrong, but the rebuild, you essentially, you keep the frame, but you basically replace everything else, and so you get almost a new VIN number and everything. It's almost like a new piece of equipment, but it saves money from buying new based on at least the dollar amount we see today. So we're looking at, it would be about 2 million dollars, but that is less than it would be if we were to actually buy all new equipment.
Mr. Carter, that replacing the roll-off trucks, too, is that a cost of 400,000 for both of them, or a piece?
Yes, sir. That should be for both of them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And so, and that would be contingent, of course, on the collection side, so. Another thing to keep in mind, and we put this on here, this is not the five-year look, but the reason for it is, we're constructing Cell 3 now, but in about year six through 10, we're going to have to be constructing Cell 4 and closing, probably Cell 2 anyway. And, and so it's just a constant, the landfill does save us money. If you look at what transfer costs are to other stations, it is a very good operation and a benefit we have to our citizens, but it still costs money to keep it updated and moving, and to keep it on schedule so that we don't have a situation to where we overfill it and we have nowhere for our trash to go.
Do you, on, off the top of your head?
Yes, sir.
I want to put you in a spot. Do you know what the projected life of our landfill is?
The entire landfill? Was it 20 to 30 years? I think it's somewhere 20 to 30 years.
Okay.
Do you have, Ms. Willow?
Yeah. Initially, 20 to 30 years in some of the cells, and in fact, the fact that we've been able to engineer it to go vertical, go deeper.
Yes.
Some estimates is as long as 50 years.
Okay.
But we can follow up, don't want to be quoted on that, but we'll have Mr. Golden follow up if you will.
We're in pretty good shape then for a while.
Yes, sir.
We should be, yes, sir.
Until, but that being said, until the next sale, now that's just the overall landfill, but in the overall landfill, there are six cells planned. We have one and two that are operating now. We're under construction for Cell 3, and as Mr. Carter points out, in about five, six years, we will need to close Cell 2 and then start Cell 4.
Yes, sir.
So by the time we get to Cell 6, we will fill that landfill up. And a lot of that's just depending on population, it's depending on industrial waste and residential waste and so forth. But we are doing a pretty good job of streamlining the waste that's going in now to the landfill.
Yes, sir. Yes. Okay, so for parks and recreation, we have, certainly have capital needs. We have several parks, we have several pieces of equipment, playground, and different items on those parks. So just to keep them maintained, possible renovations, playground replacement, concession stands on some of the parks, you know, whatever that may be housed there, over five years, that's about a 1.5 million dollar cost to keep those maintained. Vehicle equipment replacement is about 840,000. Some of that's pickup trucks, some of that's the mowers. There are various items on that, on that plan. Athletic field lighting improvements, this would be probably a little bit of a newer, but that's about a million dollars over five years. Part of the reason for that is, as we utilize our facilities, it makes them more efficient because we can host events at night, which we lack the ability to do on a lot of this now. And so it would better utilize our existing fields. And then park expansion and improvements, whether we're looking at that priority-wise, but there's about 1.1 million. We talk about greenways, trails, blueways, all of those items, and so that would be a list of proposals there that our Parks and Recreation staff are looking at. So all of that factors into a strategic plan, community priorities, livability, all the things you would probably be looking for, population, attraction. Okay.
For my part on the Parks and Rec, I think we need to pay special attention there because we've been putting a lot of pressure on them lately. A lot of pressure, so I think that, I don't know about the rest of the members, but I think we need to really pay attention to them.
In terms of staffing?
Yes. Yes, not cutting them at all, give them more.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, so for information technology, of course, they support pretty much all of the departments on the other budgets that you saw previously in order to continue to function. Everything is becoming so intermingled with information technology and the use of it. Just our licensing to keep the programs, the software, the equipment that we have today is a million dollars over five years. PC replacement and 911 storage, which is, would be server space essentially, is a million dollars over, over five years. And then the network and server refresh, 816,000. So just to keep going with our data needs, our IT needs, you're looking at almost 3 million dollars over five years in just those items. So to look at that a little bit higher level, so what we have in our five-year plan, we have that annual recurring of 2.4 million, so we're looking at just next fiscal year. We talked about the 15.4 million, the 12.2, just to reiterate what we talked about, we have about 24 million right now unfunded, we have about 49 million unfunded with local recurring over the next five-year window. And so what that does is, want to graphically show that to you, so the line, let's see if I can get this, there it is. This is our current funding level on this line, if you can see the cursor there, the little pointer. These are the requests that have occurred over the last 10 years. These are the requests that have occurred over the last ten years. Some of those have been, to be fair, some of those have been larger requests that have been handled through borrowings, use of one-time reserves, those items. But they were the requests. So what has happened though is we have pushed and we have pushed and we have pushed capital requests that weren't critical. Boy, now they're getting critical. And so we're going to have to find a way to fund some of these things. And so that line is going to have to get closer to the request in order for us to continue maintaining operations at current levels. So for inflation, now, we looked at CPI. We went back ten years. Now to keep in mind that CPI, the actual inflation for capital items has increased a lot faster than average CPI. However, there's no great index that, and because of the nature of capital equipment, it's so sporadic, or erratic, I guess I should say, there's not a good one measure. So we went with CPI just for the sake of illustration. But if we, over the last ten years, if we just took CPI, we would, we really should have about a million more dollars more in our annual recurring transfer than we have today. Just to keep up with the cost of doing what we did ten years ago. And of course, we've added things that we didn't have ten years ago. So that's part of this chart, why it looks so exacerbated by the level of funding that we have been able to add over the prior years.
Brian, would you also add to that, that we certainly have growth pressures that are contributing to the demand and pressure on the services we provide?
Yes, ma'am. We have seen tremendous growth pressures on pretty much every department. And so whether population has changed or not, the growth and the citizen expectation of the services we provide has increased exponentially, I would say. Yes, ma'am. And we see that in some of the data as we look at the metrics from our departments. And so we'll, of course, have some of that as well as staff are reviewing. So what this creates is a structural imbalance, and it's gotten to that point. The infrastructure needs, we talked about county. We haven't really mentioned school buildings yet, but there's certainly going to be infrastructure needs there. Landfill broadband, we mentioned fire apparatus, ambulances. Capital inflation on all of those. School buses, there's a significant need. While I don't know the exact number, I know that we're way behind on school bus replacement. We fund the school system enough to probably replace maybe three every year. That's not nearly enough. They probably need to replace somewhere about eight to twelve in their fleet every year in order to keep their school bus fleet accurate, up to date. And so the, because that transfer has remained flat, we're really at a point of it's just not sustainable. So I think we're going to have to realign our capital for the funding level that we're comfortable with. And ultimately, the board is agreeable to funding. And that'll be part of, as we go through our budget process, how do we adjust our capital to realign it with what our expectations are. So for, for major equipment replacement, we're going to need to find increased revenue, what that looks like, how that looks like. But we've got a structural imbalance. A lot of these items are recurring, may not be every year. A lot of what staff is trying to do is smooth some of our capital needs. What I mean by that is, instead of needing five hundred thousand in one year, if I put two hundred thousand aside in three years, I have the amount of money. And so trying to do that to, and put off capital to be able to build something like that in. But it's putting pressure on the reserves because the last two or three years, we've used reserves a year in surplus in order to fund capital. So currently, and we mentioned that, there's one point five million in this fiscal year's reserves. And I don't, we will have to use, I don't see an ability to not probably use some level of reserves next year depending on the priority of projects that we want to fund. So to give you an idea of how much the CIP is, so this is a pie chart of our general fund budgets. Our general fund budget is about a hundred million dollars. We fund two point four million. So it's two point two percent of our general fund budget is dedicated to capital. And really, we have been fortunate over the last three years to, fortunate in the sense of with COVID money, CARES money, ARPA money, we have been fortunate to realize very significant surpluses that have enhanced our reserve levels and actually allowed us to fund capital at a level we previously have not been able to. I think what you're going to see, and if you notice, if you've kept up with the state budget at all, those days are coming to an end. And so we do not have an ability, we will not soon. We're in a reassessment year. We all are well aware of that. But I think for us, regardless of that, there is a level that our citizens can afford. And so we have to come figure what that is. We can't just continue to increase taxes on some of these things. Certainly understand that. But we have to find a way to either fund services or adjust expectations. So for us, we probably have another year. I don't think this year is going to be the critical. But there's not a lot of new state funding for localities in this year's proposed budget that I have seen at this point. So I think we need to start preparing ourselves to adjust, to adjust and realign our budget. So to give you an idea of major capital projects over five years, and this isn't all of them. These are the priority ones that we put on here. We kind of said near term. Radio system infrastructure, which we have mentioned to you. Nine one one renovation expansion of four million dollars. Social services building, so, and some of these on this list, these are part of that facility study that Ms. Rossar and the Spectrum Design folks presented to you. So again, I think these are the items where we really need to have a real conversation of are we going to do this or not? And if we are, how are we going to pay for it? And so if we, if we look at a social services building, of course, that's in the old library. It does, at the very least, probably need some updates and some renovations if they stay in there. Mentioned the YMCA facility. There are certainly going to be other county facilities that have a need, but they're not on this list. But that number, just those projects there, is seventeen million dollars worth of cost. When you look at the school projects, their middle school project is ongoing now with their renovation. However, we still have to pay debt service on the literary loan that we, that we took on. And the same thing for a career and technical education center. If we move forward with that, it's seventy-two million, current estimate. The other thing that we have not considered and has recently been really brought to our attention, in a sense, is the twenty-three million dollars in the school CIP that, of other existing facilities. It's not new. This is just needs of fifty-plus-year-old buildings. However, all of these items, just keep in mind, is the projected cost. There are no, these are estimates. There are no quotes that have been attained. So we really have no idea what the cost of these projects would be. Okay, these are engineer estimates, high level at this point.
Brian, can I just interject something before you move on to fund balance?
Yes, ma'am.
On the, these five-year, with the exception of major capital projects, the other capital projects, when we get into budget, I would like to see, if you're saying that we need, I think the number was two point four million dollars annually to deal with that list, right? I would like to see some type of five-year schedule that suggests how much, I mean, is it two point four million dollars consistently? Or are there things that through board decision may come off that list that we can discuss? And what that, that five-year trended forecast might look like?
Yes, ma'am. It is two point four million dollars today. We will trend that five-year. In order to fund, as you said before discussion, and prioritization, but you know, you're probably looking at at least doubling that number to keep up with the capital.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, but we, that's part of what we will, we will need to do in a CIP program, is to smooth that, to come up with a funding stream, hopefully build in and phase it in that is more palatable. But that is the level, if you, depending on how we prioritize capital, that we probably need to start thinking about.
Mr. Chairman, what I would just say, just anecdotally, to my colleagues here on the board, and I've said this in numerous conversations, our backs are against the wall in terms of the things that are listed here that are not nice-to-haves but required. And we have not incrementally kept up. And so now our backs are against the wall. And we've got to just roll our sleeves up next month, and we've got to start figuring this out. Because if we don't, services are going to get compromised. And that's, that's just, there is an inherent balance that we're going to have to achieve, and these are going to be very difficult decisions.
Carter?
Yes, sir. And so as far as fund balance, you know, we present this, of course, you see the unassigned fund balance in the monthly finance report. We've seen different numbers. And so just to address the, what constantly is mentioned is, well, we have sixty-three million dollars in the bank. And so I want to be honest about that number. So we have a two hundred million dollar operating budget between the county and the school system. Okay? If we're, and our own households are managing our budgets appropriately, hopefully we have savings accounts because one of us could lose our job. And then we have to pay our bills till we can find another job. And so what does that look like? Typically, it's going to be somewhere in the three to six months range worth of savings is what you really should have in case a calamity like that happens. Maybe it's not a loss of a job. Maybe it's a medical bill. And so for us, sixty-three million dollars is only four months of that two hundred million dollar budget. So if the federal government enters a period of time to where they're shut down and we're receiving no reimbursement for that, we have to dip into reserves and cash flow to fund that until they fix it. And do we, till money starts flowing to us. Or if the state, as they did in the Great Recession, decides we're going to balance our budget on the backs of localities, localities, you owe us some state money back. We have to have reserves in order to pay for that. And then we fund it long enough to be able to make the recurring operational adjustments. So really, and of that sixty-three million, I have a little bit more detail later, but twenty million is for, was intended for major capital projects like the CTE. So if you really take that out, it's forty-three million. That's two and a half months of our operations. So it's not, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but two and a half months of our operations is not a significant number when you look at the size of our model and what we provide and the cost of that. And a lot of that is mandated. It's not that we would like to do these things. We are mandated to do a lot of the things that we do and provide. The rest of it, we have supplemented because our citizens have requested that level of service. So, but looking at the capital, the millions of dollars that we just talked about, if we do all of that and we don't do some kind of debt structuring through our debt management work in Davenport, or we don't increase new revenue, we will spend all of that unassigned fund balance in the five-year CIP planning window, all of it. You've heard from David Rose with Davenport. The cash is king is his quote that he likes to say. And so you also heard from our auditors, Mr. Corbin Stone, that said we're entering a period of, we've been in one, but really economic uncertainty. So he would recommend keeping reserves at a reasonable level. Did not dictate what that was. That's not the role of the auditors. But the point and the reason why they say that is, depending on how you draw down and the plan with which you draw down any, any use of fund balance, it will impact your borrowing capacity in the future. So I wanted to graphically show a little bit of what that looks like. So, and a lot of this you have seen in the monthly finance report. This is not new. Really down to about the thirty-fourth row, the remaining available fund balance after our twenty percent policy minimum, the savings, the carryover from the school system, grants and the CIP. There's that one and a half million that we balanced this year's budget with, the capital budget with. We really have about fourteen point two million dollars over our minimum. So if we take the twenty million in our generational capital reserve and add it to it, so our real number is thirty-four point two million dollars. Now I want to remind you that Davenport presented a scenario back in the fall. And it was to, in order to keep, if we move forward, again, a lot of these, these are, these are the board's decisions. This is what we want to do. What's the priority? If we construct a CTE project, they were planning to use ten million dollars of that. Now I'm down to twenty-four million dollars, just to use, just to build a CTE. That's nothing else. And so, and if you remember, the other thing, Davenport did not include, because if you remember, they have performed a debt capacity analysis for us. Well, what they didn't include was over twenty million dollars in other school capital projects in that number. They did a middle school, a CTE, and they did about ten, twenty million worth of county projects. So now you're adding another twenty million in school CIP. And what we fund the schools is only a million eighty thousand every year. So they have a similar situation in recurring. So some of that twenty million can be accomplished by that. Did not put that number in here. But they have significant needs beyond what the million eighty thousand is going to pay for. And so when you're looking at a capacity analysis, there's realistically, we're not going to be able to do a CTE, a nine one one center, renovate all of the school facilities. I just, we did not have that last time. We were almost at capacity based on Davenport's analysis, at a hundred million dollars worth of borrowing. So I want to keep that in mind. And also remember that if we didn't use the ten million, the purpose of that twenty million was so we could borrow debt and not pass along that in the guise, not the guise, in the real effect of a tax rate increase for our citizens just to pay the debt service. So on just the CTE, if we borrowed the seventy-two million dollars, we did no structuring. In order to pay that debt service, we would need to raise the equivalent of our real estate tax rate somewhere between three to four and a half to five pennies, just to pay it. And that's on the new reassessed number. That's not the old value per penny. That's on the estimated new reassessed number.
You said three to five?
Yes, sir. And that was previous analysis. They provided, of course, several scenarios, and that's over about a five to seven-year period. It's not all in one year, so I want to be clear. But on Davenport's analysis, when we asked them to come and present a capital update, as they do at least annually, just want to remind you that that number was on there. So part of this twenty million, if we started factoring that in, whether it's CTE or other capital, it really doesn't matter. I'm just using that as an example. It keeps the tax rate low in order for us to afford the debt service. Now, we have debt drop-off, and Davenport factored that in to some of there. So the lower end of that tax increase is factoring in a structured debt to where we wait for a lot of the principal repayment until we have debt drop-off on our existing debt to help build that in. But it was still about three pennies on the tax rate even then, was based on their analysis. And so all of it's based on assumptions that will change and fluctuate based on our priorities, our needs and the market at the time. Okay? So really, that, that's where we're at with capital. These are the challenges that we're facing as staff, as we prepare to bring you a budget. Wanted to point out the budget calendar, and we have printed copies. So we'll hand the board a copy of the presentation. So we're planning to propose a budget to the board on March fifth. And at this time, that was also planned to be the school board budget presentation. And so we have the month of March for possible work sessions. We tried to reserve Tuesdays and Thursdays again. That tends to be the time that we prefer to meet. We can meet as frequently or as few times as the board would like. But we would have that month of March, and then we would be looking at holding our public hearings. Just to remind you, we have to have a separate public hearing. We have to have a public hearing on the reassessment. And then we have to have a separate public hearing on the budget, proposed budget and the tax rates. And so you'll see those on the calendar as we get towards the end of March and as we get to the middle of April for the, for the ultimate adoption. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I know that staff is constantly in contact with Davenport and with our advisors.
Yes, sir.
Would it be advantageous or redundancy after the budget in our first work session to have them here with us? Or can you guys, are y'all comfortable? I don't want to infringe on you all at all, but to have them here for advisors with everybody. I think, and everybody seems to be shaking their head, yes. I would like for that very first time there, if not infringing upon y'all.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, are you talking about for the CIP portion?
I'm talking about for the first meeting after we get to budget and we go in work session. And it's for everything.
Okay.
Okay. How about the rest of y'all? How you feel? Okay? Would you like to? It would be a reminder of what's already been going through. Just, I think the consensus of the board is everybody's shaking their head, yes. Any more questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Brian. So.
Yes, sir.
First of all, on the CT, we had a joint meeting with the school board. And at that time, they talked about the next phase of work, which is the sixty percent and hundred percent engineering estimates. And I wondered, have you included any of that money in the budget? Are you expecting the school board to submit that as part of their budget?
We have not included any of that money. We typically, that we would anticipate that being a school board request. Capital, capital request, yes, sir.
Secondly, I know there's a pretty significant program to switch the green boxes over to compactor sites, and there's capital associated with that, and I didn't see that in there. Is that something separate that you're working on? I know you talked about the landfill, but there was no evidence there of the compactor stuff in there.
Yeah, the sites that we're looking at, there will be three sites. We have, from what I remember, existing funds to be able to use those. What the impact is going to be on the capital side, but the impact is going to be. What the impact is going to be on the capital side, but the impact is going to be the operating side. We have to hire part-time staff to man them. But, um, the anticipation is, uh, that we would be able to bring on three new sites next year. And so capital-wise, we have enough in, uh, Ms. Quinn, we had previously set aside budget for collection sites. So there's not a new ask necessarily in order to accomplish those.
Oh, so they're previously funded then, okay.
As of right now. So don't, don't hold me to that if we come to you and say, oh, we, we need a little bit more money, but, um...
And then lastly, it was, on the reserve, it just seems like people have all different kinds of numbers, right? There was a gentleman the other night, Tuesday night, who mentioned, well, I've heard it's twenty million, forty million, sixty. I think we finally have the single source of truth here with you at sixty-three million. Is that, that's the total amount of reserve that we have, is that correct?
That is the, we have several smaller ancillary reserves, uh, that are dedicated for various things. But realistically, what's not dedicated are those two numbers. There's the unassigned fund balance at forty-three million, and there's our generational reserve at twenty million dollars. Yes, sir, at sixty-three million. That, that is realistically our reserves that are flexible for future needs.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, will this be, uh, uploaded to the county website, this presentation?
We can.
I would like for you to put it out there for the general public so they can look at these figures.
Certainly. We have a, a budget webpage, we typically put items out there. We don't necessarily put every item, but absolutely, we'll put it out there.
Anyone else?
So Mike, I really like that idea. I remember hearing a lot of people talking about how we don't have transparency. And it really made me wonder, well, what do they mean by that? And sometimes I think it's, a presentation like this was presented, but it's not put on the website and people would just like to see it. And, and it's not that we're intentionally hiding anything, but the lack of it on the website makes them feel like we're not being transparent. So I, I applaud the idea.
Well, as a follow-up to that, for the general public, every meeting is live-streamed, they're on YouTube. You can go back and watch every meeting we've had for months and months and months. You can hear who said what, who voted for what, all of that is, it's public information.
And Mr. Carter, I would like to ask you, um, with regard to getting this put up on the website, I wouldn't even mind if we had something on the homepage that was budget. You know, twenty-four, twenty-five budget and the things that we're working through to post them to this portal that would be on the homepage so people don't have to go digging through all the departments to find stuff. And because we're in budget, and I think it would be a good service to the citizens.
I think anything that we can do to quieten this non-transparency would be advantageous. Because the meetings are open, they can come to the meetings, live-stream everything, just whatever means are available that, uh... And I know, I know that, uh, a lot of the areas don't have, uh, access to internet and all that, but it's at the library and everything else and it's out there. The transparency issue is, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem. Any other questions or comments?
Brian, thank you for all of this.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Good presentation, some good information. It's an eye-opener, I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it was a surprise to nobody. We've got, we've got, we've got to roll up our sleeves, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And it's very serious. Uh, we're going to get a handout of today's presentation. And the last page will have the, uh, schedule for the work sessions. I know it's, uh, um, in your schedules, but, uh, you know, we did run for this. We're the ones that's got to have been elected to make the big decisions. And, uh, we, we need to make ourselves available to do this. All right, they're coming down now, I'll just hold on for just a second and get that. And, uh...
Mr. Whitlow, while we're passing those out, um, can we pull that, that schedule out from this presentation and post it separately? I've got a lot of inquiry about when these public hearings are.
Yes, Ms. Smith, we'll be glad to do that.
They will be on the, uh, on the webpage as well, correct? Yeah, okay, cool. All right, we have been asked, the schools have come up with a couple of things that we've been asked to, uh, to address it. And you should have it, you should have already had this. Now I want to make this clear, very clear, that, uh, we don't even have to do this. This was as a request and, uh, uh, no action will be taken today, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Now I'm going to go with what the majority says, but there's no action that will be taken today. And in your package, you should have an, uh, resolution that they, Dave in the school has presented. I'm going to ask Mr. Whitlow, if you will, to read that, uh, resolution out loud so the ones that are here today, and it's a matter of record.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll read that, um, per your request. Resolution of the Franklin County School Board, formal stopgap funding request to the Franklin County Board of Supervisors. Whereas the Franklin County School Board is facing a projected budget shortfall of three-point-seven million due to an increase in the local composite index. And whereas the Franklin County School Board has studied a variety of budget resolution measures to include the potential closing of Henry Elementary School. And whereas the Franklin County School Board has studied a variety of budget reduction measures to include the potential closing of Burnt Chimney Elementary School. And whereas the Franklin County School Board has determined that additional time would be beneficial to develop a comprehensive plan for school closures and consolidation. And whereas the Franklin County School Board has identified one-point-two million in carryover funds from FY twenty-three that could be used as a stopgap funding for FY twenty-five. And now therefore be it resolved, the Franklin County School Board formally requests that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors provide one-time funding in the amount of two-point-five million for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five school year in order to address the projected budget shortfall. And be it further resolved that this resolution be included in the minutes of the Franklin County School Board as evidence of the formal request to the Franklin County Board of Supervisors for stopgap funding assistance accepted this nineteenth day of February, twenty-twenty-four, signed by Chairman Jeff Worley of the Franklin County School Board and attested, uh, by Mandy Burnett, Clerk, to the Franklin County School Board.
And Mr. Whitlow, do you have the scenarios in front of you?
Um, I, I do not, Mr. Chairman, from, from the previous, um, work session.
This was presented, do you all have that in front of you? The scenarios that was presented with their packet that came there?
This is from the, um, school board work session, Mr. Chairman, from the other evening. I, I have one in my folder, we can make copies.
If you will, does everybody have that? We need, uh, one, two, three, you got it?
No.
Four, need about five copies of that, please. I want to make sure everybody's got that. Mr. Whitlow, if you don't mind, if you will read scenarios one, two, three, and four. And then they give them a copy, you don't, I don't think it's necessary to go down into the advantages or disadvantages. You just read the scenarios, please. They will get copies here shortly.
Sure. This handout is from the, uh, school board work session, uh, from, uh, previous this week, I, I think on Monday evening. It says overview of the Franklin County Public Schools twenty-four, twenty-five budgetary decisions with outcomes. It notes that for all these scenarios, special education services through a student's IEP should be unchanged and bus routing should be unchanged. So as I understand, uh, from that work session, um, special education services continue in all these scenarios and the bus routing is to be unchanged, as I understand from those scenarios presented. Does say scenario one, um, item one, um, eighteen, oh, there it is. Thank you, Ms. Torres and Mr. Carter. You can see there, um, on scenario one, eighteen secondary teaching positions reduced through attrition, closures of Burnt Chimney and Henry Elementary Schools, and restructure the elementary positions based on funding sources of a net loss of two SIS positions and a projected savings of three-point-eight million. Five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand of those are local funds for two years only. And I, I did confirm that, Mr. Chairman, one of our board members had requested, um, uh, regarding the five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. And it is, Dr. Seuss had shared with me, that is only for two years. And, and so then the balance of that is approximately three-point-four million, I believe, in recurring savings, um, confirmed, um, from the superintendent. Scenario two, uh, you can see there, um, before you, I think there it is, with, um, the, the, where there are that, looks to be the same, um, items, except the closure of Burnt Chimney Elementary School, uh, again, that restructure of positions. And then in this one, there appears to be a reduction in force of paraprofessionals within the school system. And then, um, going down to scenario three and four, as shared the other evening, it appears then, scenario three, uh, again, eighteen positions, it looks to be through attrition, the closure of Henry Elementary School, the restructure of the positions based on funding sources. Uh, and then again, that twenty percent reduction in the paraprofessionals. And then finally, scenario four, um, the, it would, would include the eighteen reduced positions through attrition, the thirty-two paraprofessionals reduction, the restructure of elementary positions, and then twenty-five positions, it appears here, um, would be reduced through attrition. And you can see the various, um, projected savings from those. So I think, um, scenario one is the, it appears to be the closure of two elementary schools. Scenarios two and three, closure of one each. And then scenario four, as I read this, uh, would not close, uh, the elementary schools there as, um, presented, um, I think Monday evening.
Thank you, sir. I went back in prior papers that were given out in just recent, very recent months. And, uh, my paper that I'm looking here from the school admin challenges, it goes back to the year two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And it stated then it was seven thousand, three hundred and five students. I just went back ten years, approximately ten years, to twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, where it was seven thousand, thirty-five, thirty-seven was the population. And down to the last number that I have here in today's numbers, seven thousand, I mean, five thousand, seven hundred and ninety. That's a difference in my math of one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven students. And the school's only cut their FTEs by four. And then I find it interesting in this, uh, these four scenarios that they've put out here that every time in each one of these scenarios, they're talking about cutting teachers' positions. And there's nothing in there at all about administrative and closing all this down. And so to me, the teachers, the staff, custodians, they're the ones that are, uh, that's the workforce. Now if I'm misreading this, uh, please tell me, I don't want to make anything, uh, uh... And I see there in, in this scenario two, it's talking about an assistant principal and all of this, but, uh... We just went through a budget session here and the board of supervisors has got to make some very, uh, important decisions that's going to affect the county. And this here, to me, is a school board function, not a board supervisor function. And it's got to go back to you folks to come up with a decision, to come up and ask us then at that point what you want to do. Now I can appreciate the fact of it being four scenarios there. But, uh, as for my part today, I'm not prepared to do anything on this. Because it's, you guys have got to come up with, what are you going to do with your budget? Now I know it's all projected, we don't even know for sure that the state, I was just down there last week. And they're not even one-hundred percent sure that it's going to even be next year. They did tell us that it may be, uh, one year, two years. But we are going to have to deal with this C, uh, CPI number, this, uh, composite index number. It is going to have to be done, but we don't know that it's here yet. And so with that being said, I'm going to open the floor up to hear what everybody else wants to say and, uh, whether we're going to do any kind or just table it after we hear from the school board on what they really want to do. I appreciate these scenarios, but that's where we stand. So I'll open it up, we'll just go down, uh, one at a time. And if you want to make comment, or if you don't, we'll just go from there. Who wants to go first? Somebody's got to go, Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. For my part, I have always been a very strong proponent of the school systems. I have always supported the schools, the teachers. Uh, my first year on this board, we had a tax increase. I was the only supervisor that designated two cents of that tax increase to go to teachers' pay. And what happened with the bulk of that money, uh, they used a lot of it to pay upper administration. But with that being said, uh, for my part, I'm ready to give them the funding, the, whatever they need over the one-point-two million. I want to address this problem moving forward so at their meetings coming up, they can tell the citizens what they're going to do. Are you going to close schools? These people want answers, you've got teachers that have jobs that want to know what they're going to do in the future. Uh, we have the money to fund it this time, we don't moving forward, you just saw our budget. Uh, I think we've got tough budgetary decisions to make, but I think the school system needs to know, we're going to step up to the plate, we're going to cover it this year, but your giant ship is moving forward at a very fast pace. And you are going to have to consolidate or do something to curb what's happening. If you look at the statistics, and the ADM has dropped every single year I've been on this board, and we have funded the schools basically what they've asked for every year I've been on this board. By the end of, uh, twenty-thirty, if I read the statistics right, ADM's going to be down another twenty-five or thirty percent. So we're going to have empty classrooms in Franklin County. We don't have the children to fill them. And we have a brand-new school at Windy Gap, if I understand what I saw on your presentation, it's got eight empty classrooms. So you all need to get to work, I'm willing to give you the money to fix this right now. But the school board needs to come out and say, this is what we're doing moving forward to fix the problem. And that's where I'm at, Mr. Chairman.
Next?
I'll go. So in my opinion, we, the board of supervisors, the school board, Franklin County administration, and the public schools need to do a better job of forecasting and planning. Looking back, the state funding reduction came as a big surprise in December and is now a fire drill. In fact, we could have forecast this reduction over a year ago. The state formula did not change, the student attendance count was known, and one could estimate the property tax, uh, or property value increases from actual sales. And armed with the now-year-old consulting report on how to respond to the long-term student decline, we could have planned for a more orderly transition. We must not look forward and plan. Grants are soon going to run out for the school resource officers, so the county will be faced with another million-dollar-plus expense. And according to the consulting port, report, one elementary school has HVA systems way beyond their useful life that will cost two to five million dollars to replace. Hopefully, we won't wait for a failure in the dead of winter before planning to handle this massive capital expenditure. Secondly, the board has a responsibility to work for all the constituents, including the parents of the elementary school kids who seemingly want to keep all the schools open regardless of cost. But we must also work for the constituents who are strongly demanding we minimize expenditures, and I go back to Tuesday night, and the resulting tax increases. Well, I am empathetic to both groups, I'm particularly sympathetic to the many constituents who are struggling financially, and in many cases, a dollar of tax increase means a dollar less food. Schools have become very expensive and with student populations forecasted decline and expenses continuing to rise, I believe we need to carefully rationalize our school structure knowing we can only afford to operate essential schools. Third point, I'm a strong supporter of a great educational system, and I believe closing the school, some schools is consistent with pursuing educational excellence. We need to work towards having the best school system in the state. That would... That would be my objective. We can't keep spreading our limited school dollars across more schools than required. I would rather see us close a small number of schools so we can better fund the remaining schools to pursue educational excellence. For me, that means paying our teachers more so we attract the best and brightest, and spending more on school resources such as computers, specialized staff, food, and supplies to ensure we are providing the best educational experience for our kids. Although it may seem inconsistently inconsistent, I ultimately hope to see us build the new CTE schools so we better equip our high schoolers with the skills necessary to compete in today's economy. By making tough choices now, I believe we can position our school system to be a best-in-class operation in the future. So the last point I would just make about voting for this, I cannot in good conscience vote for this funding, knowing it could have been avoided, and I'd be shifting the consequences to the taxpayer. Secondly, we've had a year since the consulting report to plan for closures. And now we have another six months to plan for the closures. And I cannot support kicking this $3.7 million can down the road. And finally, delaying the closures delays achieving educational excellence. I would rather begin planning for and executing educational excellence today than waiting for the '25, '26 school year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim?
I agree with Mr. Quinn. This is a school board's problem. It's been there for a long time and hasn't been addressed. There, this request is asking for, you know, $2.5 million as a Band-Aid for more time. I got all, I mean, you look back, when COVID hit, you shut down the entire system, you know? 12 elementary schools, one middle school, one high school. Very limited time. I got all the faith in the world in you with the, with that experience under your belt. You can do this and save the taxpayers that money. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, you got a comment?
Yes, trying to take in all of the feedback from my colleagues. I guess, well, let me just say this. I have a little confusion, Mr. Chairman, over some of the numbers that are in play. And we may have to ask Dr. Sears potentially to answer my question because it relates to this, to this request. And here's the question. The $1.5 million request is, I mean, excuse me, 2.5. They, the schools have said 1.5 of their carryover is going to be contributed to helping bridge the gap of this state reduction. And my confusion is this, and I, some, I know part of the answer, but I'm getting more confused. So I know the school board has worked with the staff, school staff, and have come up with approximately $1.5 million for, with 18 positions, some of which were ESTER-funded. And that's gone, that money's gone away. And so there's $1.5 million there. And so my understanding was, is that the school carryover number of almost $3.6 million, my understanding was, is that the balance over and above the 1.5 that schools were going to contribute towards the deficit, that's going to leave a balance of money. And I had understood that that variance was going to be used towards salaries. So my question is, I'm seeing two different pots of money on an approximate basis of, you know, that could close this gap. And I don't understand, I mean, I am confused. And I don't understand it. And I would like an answer so that my numbers start to make sense. So is it, you know, you're using, you're wanting to hold back 1.5 for, to implement your, your year two of your pay classification study? So what the money left over out of 3.5 carryover, and then the 18 positions that are going with, through with attrition of another 1.5, tell me if my assertion of those numbers, number one, is correct. And if it is correct, then that's $3 million just within those two allocations on top of the 1.5 that you've already planned to contribute. So I need some clarification, Mr. Chairman.
What, what is the specific question? What is the 1.5 going for?
I want to know, I want to know of the, of the total school carryover, which Bronda showed us, of $3.6 million. My initial question some time ago is, how much of that 3.5 was the school board comfortable with contributing to the state reduction? And the number was 1.5, which is in the resolution. But my confusion now is that the school board has really worked hard and demonstrated a lot of courage. And you have identified 18 positions through attrition, some of them that were ESTER-funded. And my understanding is, is that that reconciliation of those positions is sitting at about $1.5 million. So my question is, are, is the school board planning on dealing with those 18 positions? Yes or no? And then if you are dealing with them, are you going to deal with them to help close this gap? Or are you going to want to hold that money back for your '24, '25 revenue projections?
Mr. Worley, are you or a member of staff prepared to answer that question today?
Dr. Sears is here. Would you like to add?
Dr. Sears will come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Just to first touch on the carryover money, the 3-point-some million dollars. The bulk of that is actually money that was a state one-time funding for capital projects. The actual carryover is 1.2 million that we have some flexibility on. So that is what we're requesting to be able to use as a stopgap funding for next year to help with the $3.7 million deficit.
All right, I'm going to stop you there. Explain to me about the balance. What you're saying is, you're saying it's restricted?
Yes.
And a carryover number, operating carryover is restricted?
The largest portion of the, that, over $3 million in carryover funds is restricted for capital projects. And it was already determined that that would go toward the HVAC project at the middle school.
Okay, so that's figured in towards the middle school project?
Yes, it is.
Good answer. Okay.
And the, the other 1.3 million cuts through attrition, yes, we would like to apply that toward the local share of any salary increases that are funded, whether it be Phase Two or, it appears that both the House incentive version of the budget have at least a three-point increase for teachers. So that, we would plan to use that savings to help fund the, the local portion of the salary increases. So that leaves us with what we need to still cover the $3.7 million deficit, which we would apply the, the 1.2 million in carryover. And we're asking the board of supervisors to do the one-time funding of 2.5 million to get us through next year while we continue to work on school closure and consolidation plans and study some of the other options as well that have been looked at this year. But we felt like we would not be able to do a good job of putting them in place for next year.
And Dr. Sears, just, I'm having trouble. I had a conversation with Chairman Worley this week. I'm having a hard time getting my, my head around, you know, the school board and the administration, you guys are talking about closing one, two schools and potentially up to five, four, five over the next five years. I can't reconcile in my mind closing a school potentially in this next upcoming year and continuing to fund your pay study. When that pay study is going to be impacted, the amount of money that you need to fund that second phase of your pay study, if you're going to be cutting positions and closing schools, that number is become, going to become less and less.
Yes, it would be, need to be adjusted based on the number of employees that we have.
So have you run those numbers to know what that reduction will be?
We have not because until we know our path forward, we don't actually know how many we're going to be reducing. The school closures actually allow us to function with keeping more of our folks employed than if we don't do school closures as an option. If that's, if we have to come up with the 3.7 million by ourselves without closing schools, then we're looking at eliminating over 70 positions. And it would not be handled through attrition. It would have to be an outright layoff of employees.
Understand. Thank you, Dr. Sears. I appreciate your clarification.
Sure. Thank you.
Let's open up any more questions for him while he's up here for anybody else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If, if I could continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I wanted to get that cleared up because I want to make sure that in closing this gap that we are bringing to bear and understand where the monies are and what they're being used for so that we can make informed decisions. I, I am with Mr. Carter on supporting the board of supervisors, funding this $2.5 million gap. And the reason that I support that, it really is, it's, it doesn't matter in the scheme of, you know, we're here today. We've got, we've got difficult decisions to make. The school board's got difficult decisions to make. But irrespective of the decisions a school board makes to close schools or not close schools, this state reduction takes effect July 1st. And we're talking just a period of months. My knee-jerk reaction when I first heard about the LCI was if the school board is going to make a decision to close schools, and that's their decision, I don't want them doing it in a knee-jerk reactor and, you know, reaction away where thoughtful decisions are not being made about where, who, and how we're impacting Franklin County families and students. The, this decision needs to be carefully planned. And I, I know the schools had a facility study done last year that yielded the results of closing schools to, to achieve efficiencies within the school division. And I have had conversations with school board members, and I think I've even said it publicly a couple times. The school board must align their budget. They read, they need to realign it to be responsive to the decrease in the ADM. You know, if you're educating 1,300, 1,400 less children, then your budget should reflect that. And, and that is a matter of, of efficiency. It's a matter of being fiscally responsible for the taxpayers' money that's so very precious. And I have witnessed in our meetings, the school board being very courageous and being very brave to bring forth those options they bought forth in early January. And I've commended them for that. But I do not have a problem in agreement with Mr. Carter to fund this 2.5 because at the end of the day, what the school board decision is going to be, we still locally fund our school division. And we are, if I'm funding the school division at our local share, I sure want to make sure that my money, that the taxpayers' money and the allocation that I would have a vote in, it's not my money, but the taxpayers' money, is that they're making decisions and they're having the time to do so so that we can ensure that the least amount of damage can be done to our families and children, having the time to do that. Now, could they have done it last year? I don't know the answer to that. Dr. Sears was in the process of being hired. And, and so there's been, and all of the post-COVID things that have occurred. So I don't have a problem funding this. I would vote today to do that. But hand in hand with me saying that I, you know, my vote would be to, to do that. I want to work, I want our board to continue to work with the school board to support them. These decisions, and I agree with Mr. Jamison, these decisions are school board decisions. And these options, I very much appreciate. And I know the work that's gone into developing these options. But I don't want a decision made by our board of supervisors to cause you to make a decision one way or the other because it's ultimately your decision. And you all are the experts, the elected experts on schools. And it would be presumptuous of this board, I believe, to try to choose an option and say, let's work towards that. So that even further focuses my ability to approve of $2.5 million so that we can make sure we get this right. And I'm not going to point fingers over who should have done what when. We are where we are. And the priority are children. The priority are our families. And the teachers now that are scrambling, wondering if they have a job in the, you know, when they, are they going to get a contract in April, in two months? That's patently unfair to our teachers and to staff. These decisions are heavy. And we have the money to help the school board over this hump. And we can work towards how we deal with that in, in the long haul. I mean, it may be that this board makes a decision, maybe that a percentage of the carryover moving forward gets put back where we take it from to help trying to alleviate the, the pressure we're putting on our reserve funds for this. But this is a very, very difficult decision. And, and the reason I paused earlier, my colleagues are making excellent points. But at the end of the day, my decision is based on the things that I've articulated here. And I'm trying to keep my priorities in line. And I know my colleagues are doing the same thing. And it is not out of disrespect or disregard for the school board. We're all trying to do the very best we can with our tax dollars and to make sure that our families, our teachers, and the citizens of Franklin County have confidence that we are really thoroughly thinking these things through and trying to use taxpayer dollars to the best of our ability. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mitch.
I've been following their, watching their budget work sessions and meetings online. And Dr. Sears said it best that this conversation should have been had two, three years before this. But we are where we are. And I agree with Mr. Carter on, I believe if I heard it right, it was seven empty classrooms at Windy Gap. And I was hoping that the, the schools would come back somewhere in the middle. And, but I, I'm afraid that if we fund this, we're going to be right here in the same boat next year. This, that's a whole lot of money to just put something down the road further. And I'm open to helping them to bridge this gap, to come up with something. But I look forward to following their public hearing on Saturday. I agree with what Mr. Quinn said. People have, people are struggling, picking between food and taxes. That, that's not an option for me. And we have seven empty classrooms in the newest school in our county. It, I don't like spending, I don't like thinking to spend my constituents' tax dollars that way. I'm not ready to take any action on this.
Thank you. Mr. Tatum, you back on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. It's your turn. You got a comment on this?
I've heard. Yes, I, I just heard just briefly some of Mr. Smith's comments. I would like to see a better plan. I don't think we're in a position right now to where, I mean, yeah, if whatever we, now it's kicked the can down the road. However, we do need to come up with a, a short-term fix so we can keep schools open for this coming fall to give time for the state to get their act straight on this funding issue. And I would support, I think the school has identified 1.2 million of carryover to be used. So there, if I saw correctly, there was still the 2.5 million to get through here. And then we'd have to do something else in February next year. I would support on the 2.5 million from our surplus funds, get through this year to, to the state a chance to work things out. But with that said, we'd have to come up with an entirely different plan next year. With, it would have to be understood that this is strictly a this-year short-term solution. And, you know, I'm not going to speak for other schools and other districts, but I will fight tooth and nail not to let Henry School get closed. I do, I understand there are empty classrooms at Windy Gap. There are some space, I think, at Dudley that could be utilized if, if we wanted to close down Burnchimney. Even though I don't like seeing any schools closed, the main one that I'm defending is the one in my district, and that's Henry. I do not want to see children from Henry being bused to Sontag, Snow Creek, and Farum and having to drive by an empty school to get there. So that's where I'm at. I, you know, I'm not going to speak for the other schools. But as far as Henry goes, I'm going to fight tooth and nail to keep it open. And I do support if we need to take 2.5 million from our designated reserves to get through this year. I support doing that. And that's just where I'm at. But that is just a short-term fix. Something more long-term would have to be worked out for next year. And hopefully, the school could, could come back to the drawing table and help us. And I'm come back to the drawing table and help us. And I'm hoping the state can get this worked out. So that's ultimately where it's got to come from. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. I'll save my comments to last. I'll send my statement there at the beginning that we do not have to take action on this today, and we don't. The ultimate decision lies with the school board, not with the Board of Supervisors when it comes to closing schools and things of this nature. And we got to make, that's why the school board was elected, just like we were elected, to make the tough decisions. I cannot, I cannot in good conscience vote today or tomorrow to give any kind of extra funds when the, when it's just still kicking the can down the road. A decision has to be made. And the money, for example, closing schools, approximately $3.8 million. That's how much money we're talking about. And if you keep it open, when there's empty classrooms, and then the layoff of teachers, when we got empty classrooms there, doesn't make sense to me. You send these students, if you close a school, the teachers to that classroom. I see where the, where the money savings is going to be in administration. So, you know, the principals, assistant principals, assistant to the assistant principals, and I've heard the stories and rumors about those peoples there, administrative people there for making sure teachers help with lesson plans. Well, I thought learning to do a lesson plan was part of the teaching. I think that the teachers are being, the ones that are doing the work are the ones that are taking the blunt of this, and it can be moved. And I cannot in good conscience, and as far as the busing, as far as the busing goes, the kids are being bused from one place to the other. Let's just use Burnt Chimney. I went to school there when I was a kid. That's where I started school at. And to me, if a kid go, a child goes to Burnt Chimney School, and if there's, part of them's going to go to Dudley, part of them's going to go to Windy Gap, and part of them's going to go to Boons Mill, it's just a matter of that bus turning right or left at an intersection. Turns left to go to Burnt Chimney School, turns right to go to Dudley or to Windy Gap or to Boons Mill. That's where that is. Now, I know you may have to take them to one place, put them all on the bus, but I'm just throwing out scenarios there of where I think, and I see it. But that is y'all's decision, not this board.
Can I address the board?
No, sir. No, sir. Not now. And that is where, that's where we stand. And as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to, for my part, I'm not saying that we may not have to do this, but I don't think we're there yet. I think that we could table this until our March meeting to see what comes up with the, this event you all are having on Saturday. I think I already know what that's going to be. I think you know what that's going to be. The majority of people's going to come up, and they're going to want to keep the local schools opening. But at some point, a decision has got to be made. And I am not, I'm going to have to be with my other colleagues here, or as part of my other colleagues. I am not in a position today to, to give you any money with that. Now, if you got a brief statement that you'd like to make, Chairman Worley?
If that's okay. Thank you. I apologize for interrupting. I didn't mean to.
I just want to, I want to address one thing and your concerns as a board, and I agree with them. This is a serious problem. We've taken it seriously from the beginning. We're well aware of ADM drop. We're well aware of it. And we've addressed it every year that we could through our budgeting. I mean, but this was an onerous figure that we had to deal with. Listen, the facility study was enacted a year and a half ago. We were planning all this before the state shortfall hit, okay? We were going to address this incrementally, slowly, to give people time to try to readjust to the things we were doing. And make no mistake, we understand this problem is not going away. We will be addressing it. And I'm going to tell you that right now. The majority of our board has just felt like that we needed more time. There are some of us who felt like we can move forward. I think the families would like more time. I think staff would like more time. But we work, we are trying to work forward and move and come with some solutions. Some of the solutions we came to y'all with, you didn't like. So we've been, we felt like we've been trying to come up with these things, but any of these things take time. But I can tell you, next year, they will be addressed. This shortfall is not going away, and we know that. And we don't expect the county to continue to give us funding when we are facing ADM declines. But this was more for the citizens and for our staff. We know we have hard decisions. But we all work for the citizens of this county, like Mrs. Smith said, and I think that this would help some of them prepare. So I just want to make that statement. I appreciate the time you're taking. I know y'all have hard decisions. I mean, we heard it tonight or today. You've got hard decisions too. We all do. And we appreciate the work you're doing. We appreciate what you do for the schools because you have been helpful to us. And we've said that publicly, and we'll continue to do so. I think our relationship is good, and we will move forward with whatever we have to do. So I just want to make that statement. So thank you for giving me the time to say it. I appreciate it.
While you're here.
Yes, sir.
It's pretty obvious that with these four scenarios, you didn't come up with these in Monday night's meeting. There's been a lot of time put into it already.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, we instructed staff to have scenarios in case we didn't get funding. I mean, we have to be able to present a balanced budget. That is not an option.
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
Well, my point is, this just wasn't done in Monday night's meeting.
It was presented at Monday's night meeting, but yes, sir. But it does take time to come up with these things.
Thank you, sir.
It hasn't been for a year and a half. So, thank you.
All right. We've got, if you want to take action today, we can. If you want to table it until after we see what happens Saturday in their meetings and bring it up in our March meeting, we can do that. It's the board's pleasure. Let's talk about it before there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say, I would like to take action, however, according to our policy and according to what I'm hearing, it's not going to pass, given what my colleagues up here said. And if this doesn't pass, we can't bring this back up, the, you know, the prevailing policy that we have on this. So I'm struggling with whether to reserve taking action today. I know the school board needs, and they desire an answer, and I get it. But I don't, this vote's not going to pass. Maybe, I mean, I think we've got three, it's three to four in terms of my observation. So I want to make sure that if we don't take action today, that the only thing that would do, it would be to allow more time for discussion with those that are not in support of it to see if more information or more discussions could be had in the interim. And I don't know if that's going to change anything. I'm not sure I want to suffer through a defeated vote on this and not being able to pick it back up. Mike, what do you think?
I agree with Ms. Smith's comments. I would like to put this matter to rest today because I think the people of Franklin County deserve it. And if we could vote on this and come to a decision, it would free up the school board to make their decision moving forward. But I don't think my colleagues share the same viewpoint as Ms. Smith and Mr. Tatum and myself. If we didn't have the money to bridge this, I would feel differently about it. But we do. We have the money. And it buys them a little time. It buys the teachers some time to figure out what they're going to do, gives parents some time to decide, you know, do they want their child to be bused to a different school if they choose one of these scenarios? The bad part is, and I don't think a lot of the citizens realize this, we're the bank. We give the school the money, then they make the decision. And we're in a catch-22 here where a lot of people are blaming us for these school closures or what's happened, and that's not the case. That's why, for me, for myself, I would like to go ahead and be able to give them the money or the know-how that they're going to get the money so they can move forward with their decision-making process. And if that changes any of your minds, we'll talk some more and maybe vote. And if not, I think we should table it.
The only thing that I disagree with you on what you just said, Mike, was we don't have the money. I know what you're saying, that we do have it, but we don't have it. And to me, all we're doing is procrastinating to prevent the inevitable, what's coming. Mr. Mitchell, you had your hand up.
I weigh every decision I make on this board against what I think my constituents can afford. And we live in a county with 50% poverty. The time we're trying to buy here is expensive.
Yes.
And whether it's reserves or not, it is taxpayer money. I am prepared to go for less. I'm prepared to match, to give them money, but not at that amount. I feel like we've dug and dived, and we're trying to make it work. They need to meet us in the middle.
So what would you propose, Mr. Mitchell?
Dead middle.
Dead middle? So take the 3.7?
Well, and everyone needs to remember, that rollover money, that's up to us too. That's not a guarantee.
Well, the carryover is.
The carryover is up to the board as well.
Correct.
All that money from any county department reverts back to the county.
It should. It's supposed to.
Yes.
Well, by law, it has to revert back.
It has to, but it hasn't.
They're asking for the 2.5, and I'm fine, you know, even though I, the 1.2 million needs to get, you just heard a presentation about the capital needs we have. That 1.2 million needs to be spent on capital. If they want to spend it as stopgap, I'm okay with it. The 2.5, I'll meet in the middle.
Okay. Let me ask this question.
Laurie, let me ask.
I'm sorry.
And we can meet in the middle, and there's still, and I just say this for the general public, there's no, there's still no guarantee that they're going to get what they want. Because in the end, we don't make, we just decide on the money. And the school board has these tough decisions to make. And I'm glad I'm not in their position. I don't want to talk about closing any school. But in the end, even if we give them that, it's their decision.
I was just going to pose another question, just to kind of try to work to some consensus here. Would it make any difference if we worked out an arrangement where we kept a certain percentage of their carryover in the next few years to put that money back in that reserve?
I don't know what that would be.
To me, that doesn't matter because we fund them anyway.
In the next few years either. I mean, we're talking about a problem for right now. A decision that's got to be made for right now of where we're at of this money that you're talking.
Well, I'm willing to put a motion on the floor with, given what Mr. Mitchell just said. My motion that would suggest that, that we, as a board, allocate 50% of the deficit. I'm sorry, Mr. Carter?
Well, before we do that, I would like to hear from Dr. Sears and Mr. Worley what their thoughts are if we meet them halfway. What's that going to buy them?
Okay, before we go there, I want to make sure, anybody else on the board got anything to say?
Whether we meet them in the middle or fund it or not, I mean, it's still tax money. It's still taxpayers' money. We've been sitting here night, several nights on public speaking, and you've been hearing just what, we said a while ago, what Dan said. People are strapped right now.
Yes.
Their budgets are at the end, and this is only going to put more stress to it. I mean, and Mike, we're, we're the bank, but we ain't the bank. We don't have the money. We've got taxpayers' money. And the taxpayers, the people, the residents are the ones going to put the bill. And whether that's raise taxes or it's their money.
Hey, what is your, what do you want to hear from Ms. Sears? Ms. Sears, will you come forward? Doc Sears? Got a question for you.
Thank you, Dr. Sears. If we put this proposal out there and meet in the middle, is that workable for you all to make a decision moving forward?
I mean, anything would help. You know, knowing something definite today would certainly help in our decision-making process because we have to present a budget to you all on March 5th. So anything after that date, we will have to have made our decisions prior to that. You know, I'm not certain, are you saying half of the 2.5 and we use the 1.2 million? Or you're saying half overall of the 3.7 million? Because that's a pretty big difference.
Mr., I would ask Mr. Mitchell, what is his opinion?
I'm fine with them with the carryover and half of the others. So that puts us at...
You're talking about giving them a 1.2 and then half of the 2.5?
Yes.
Yes, I think that that could be helpful in, you know, we are still going to have to have the conversations and still have to make some pretty significant cuts, but that could change the depth of those cuts, at least for one year.
So that's, you're saying 1.2 million?
Mm-hmm.
And remember, I also, from listening to their meeting the other night, this isn't going to be the end of it. There's more things.
That's right.
There are more things. And I think this is a generous, you know, I was really hoping that they were going to come to us with something, meet in the middle, is what I was hoping for. And that didn't happen. I agree with what Marshall and Dan and Ronnie are saying as well. But Mike and I paid a visit to a couple of them, and I will be honest, we paid a visit to those elementary schools, and it softened me. But at the end of the day, this is taxpayer money. And the schools, the school board needs to realize that too and make these changes based on what's best for the taxpayers. Even though that's our job and that's what we're here to do, that's all I got.
It wouldn't hurt to hear what they have at their public hearing on Saturday before we do any...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to open the floor for a motion, and I'm going to tell you, be careful what your motion is. To me, I don't think it's going to hurt to wait till March, till after they have that meeting. But it's up to you. I've got a vote. You already know where I stand.
Well, it's like we said, we know what we're going to hear Saturday.
Say that again.
I said, it's like we said, we know what they're going to hear on Saturday.
You got a motion. Let's make it.
Yes, I will make a motion.
Make it.
I would make a motion that the Board of Supervisors contribute, I believe it's 2.4. Is that the right number? No? Half, oh, half of the 1.2. What is the number?
1.2 and carryover. I mean, that was 2.5, so that would be 1.25.
The carryover, if I wrote my numbers down, was 1.2. And then they were asking for 2.5. And did I write my numbers down right? Madam Clerk? And the 2.5.
My mind is so blown. Okay.
What about Mr. Tatum? Are we going to get him?
He's online.
He's on? Okay.
He can hear us.
I'm here. Ronnie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think this, it's not a perfect case scenario, which I don't think we're going to be able to come up with a perfect case scenario. But if this can help the school board to finish their budget and present us a budget, I'm good with it. Like I said, it's not best case scenario, but it's better than where we were before the meeting started tonight. And I think this is where we're going to have to face it, is one bite at a time.
So I'll continue with my motion, Mr. Chairman, if permitted. I would make a motion that the Franklin County Board of Supervisors make an allocation of $2.5 million to assist in closing the local composite index deficit of, I believe it's 3.8, 3.7, 3.8. And that the allocation of this money to help close this gap is a one-time allocation of funding. Mike, am I missing anything here?
Sounds pretty good. Can you clear, what amount did you put on that?
2.5.
Inclusive?
Mm-hmm.
That's including the half?
That's the 1.2. And then if you take the 2.5, right, that we're being asked for, and splitting that, that's what you said, Nick? Correct? It's 1.25. And 1.2 brings you to 2.5.
But that includes the rollover, the carryover funds?
Mm-hmm. Am I getting my math right? My mind's so blown right now.
If I may.
Please help me.
Yeah. A couple of things here. I think what I'm hearing is...
A couple of things here, I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is, a couple of things, and perhaps, and procedurally, I know our county attorney's with us to, to, to help us navigate through some of this. I hear really there's, there's two requests, or this will make up, being 1.2 million of carryover for the school system, probably in, in one motion, to allow them to use their FY 2223, 1.2 million, in that specific motion. And then perhaps a second motion then would be, if following Mr. Nick Mitchell's point of 1.25. So 1.2, and then 1.25, of course, that total is 2.45, but 1.2 carryover in a, in a separate motion, and then another motion, 1.25 from, from the county. Now, from the standpoint, of staff standpoint, we need to know where in our reserves to allocate the 1.25 from. And then another clarification for the county attorney, we appropriate, once monies are appropriated, monies are gone. They're, they are over to the school system. So if there is an intent that these funds go towards, whether it's keeping a school open and so forth, I'm not sure how that's made into a motion, because we don't necessarily appropriate by category per se, but maybe resolution language that, you know, certainly that, if that is the intent of both the 1.2 million from carryover, or the 1.25, or it's upon the school system for the whole 2.45 to ever how close that gap how they will. But if there is some intent, you know, in the motion, I think, looking at the county attorney, I don't, I don't know how that's done, but I, but I, but I do think, from a procedural standpoint, looking at our CFO, two motions are likely in order, one being the 1.2 million in carryover from the schools, and then a separate motion from a, a specific county reserve account. And we may want to discuss, and, and I would advise maybe the board, speak with our finance director, deputy administrator, Brian Carter, on that. We do have, as you all know, we do have, you know, some reserves, but there are some specific reserves that we may want to look at if, if, if the board's going to make this action.
Mr. Whitlow, caveat to what you just said, we haven't had a formal request for the carryover yet.
That, that, that is, that is, looking at, looking at the resolution from the schools, it wasn't, it wasn't formally requested.
Right.
It, it, to your point, Ms. Smith.
It was inferred.
It was inferred, that's correct.
So in order for us to do anything, for, for us to acknowledge that is their approval of their carryover?
Correct.
It's not that yet.
Correct. Not, not, not that I see in the resolution. It wasn't requested.
Maybe cleaner to, maybe cleaner to do this as a motion to authorize staff in the budget-making process, because I mean, this is the next year's budget. It's, it's not a current budget. Because if you're allocating funds from this budget, you run into other procedural issues in trying to change your, your amounts. But this is more of a signal to staff to how to do the budget. That's how I'm interpreting it.
For this specific amount, Chris?
Yeah, for this amount for fiscal year 2425, which is the budget you'll be approving in the next few months and working on.
And that way, staff could evaluate and advise the best place to take the money from?
I don't think you can allocate inappropriate funds for fiscal year 2425 right now, anyway.
That's correct. We haven't had a budget presented or a public hearing.
Right, you haven't had a public hearing on public notice, so I, it may be cleaner to authorize staff to prepare the budget in this manner, and that, of course, communicates your intent to the school board as well, which will help their decision-making process. But... Mr. Whitlow, would you suggest that we wait on this, for you guys to look into this, and can we not push the, the hearing for the school's budget back to where they can have a little bit more time, and you guys come to us with an answer on how this needs to be done?
In terms of timing, Mr. Mitchell, the, of course, with tax rates, the fact that we do twice-year tax collections, and with reassessment, that is really the nature of the compressed budget schedule in Franklin County. So for us to know a specific tax rate, the commissioner has to know that rate in mid-April to get tax bills out to the citizens. So there are statutory requirements in terms of the budget and the, specifically the reassessment hearing, and I believe it is one month, it's 30 days. I think the last time we looked at that, Mr. Carter? Okay. Yes, seven days for the advertisement, and that was for the reassessment, and I think that was changed in the General Assembly. And then it has to be a separate hearing then from, from the, the budget public hearing, which right now is scheduled tentatively for March the 25th. So, you know, if we back up the budget timeframe, I'm just not quite sure how much time we can get all the work done on the budget with our work sessions and all the work that has to be done prior to budget adoption, scheduled tentatively the week of April the 8th. It will be very tight to get that done, to get a budget presented, and then, and have the, the work sessions in March. And that's just off the cuff, just trying to think through, through that, and I'm looking at Mr. Carter, if we've missed anything, and, and Mr. Daddak?
I would just add, I don't know if it's helpful, you're not required to make a motion. I mean, you've discussed it, you've, people have expressed their vote counts. I think you've signaled to the school board where things may lie. It's not, it's pretty uncommon, actually, in budget work sessions to have formal votes. You, you can, you absolutely can, I'm not discouraging from it, but it's not required.
It, it may be. That being said, Mr. Daddak, if, if there is, again, if, if there's not a vote, if there's consensus direction...
There are upsides to a vote, particularly in this situation, but I'm just saying, from a legal perspective, you're not required to make a formal motion.
I think, I think we're getting really hit of everything here. The budget has been set for this year. The 20, this year's budget. What we're going into is next year's budget. I think that's clear with everybody. This money that they're asking for is for next year's budget. It's done for this year. And I really think we're getting a hit of the game here. I think it's going to be detrimental instead of beneficial.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect...
Let me finish, Ms. Smith.
Oh, please do.
But just go ahead.
The reserves stay pretty static unless we take a special motion during the year, which we have done. It's the operating budget that's going to be most different. I don't see any difference in us pulling a couple million dollars out for a fire truck than doing something with our reserve accounts versus it being operating. So the, the issue of the 2425 budget, that's fine if you want to structure it that way, but, you know, I think it's important to get this board on the record for what we're going to do.
Anyone else? All right, what do you want to do?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a, continue to make a motion, that the Board of Supervisors authorize staff in their 202425 budget preparation to include a $2.5 million reserve allocation for purposes to assist the school board in meeting the $3.7 million deficit created by an increase in the local composite index.
Where's the money going to come from?
When staff do their budget prep, they'll come to us with that, that's, we're authorizing them to look towards that during their budget preparation.
All right, do we get a second?
Second.
Any other motions? Madam Clerk, would you read that motion back, please? Mr. Tatum, can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Ms. Smith, just for clarification, the motion you just made was not a continuation of your prior motion?
No, correct, Maddie, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Wanted to clarify. The motion I have is, the Board of Supervisors will authorize staff in their fiscal year 2425 budget preparation to include a $2.5 million allocation for purposes to assist the school board and the $3.7 million deficit created by the budget decrease.
For LCI.
What else?
At the LCI bu- budget deficit. Thank you, Maddie.
Madam Clerk, we do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Tom, I'm sorry, Supervisor Tatum?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn?
No.
Supervisor Jameson?
No.
Supervisor Mitchell?
Yes.
Supervisor Carter?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
No. Motion carried. Okay. Storm Strong, how long do you anticipate your presentation taking? I was scheduled for a break. Let's just go through this and get it, get it over with, okay? I didn't mean it that way, that sounded ugly. That sounded ugly, but if we take a break, our...
Let's just get it over with.
Our supper, our supper's back there, and it's liable to take. I did not mean it that way at all. Please forgive me. You're not mad at me now, are you?
No, as long as we're still friends.
We're friends.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a friend, I'm...
Mr. Chairman, board members, greetings from your Franklin County Farm Bureau. We have with us today Mr. Sonny Meyerhofer, who our board has retained to do a feasibility study for bringing poultry production to Franklin County. I think nearly everyone has been in at least one of our joint meetings with Farm Bureau, and we, we have very much enjoyed the dialogue that we've had at those meetings. And I wanted to give a brief introduction, if I could, Mr. Meyerhofer, because he brings considerable gravitas to this discussion, per his experience in this industry. Mr. Meyerhofer resides in Mount Crawford, Virginia, and he has many professional experiences and managerial experiences. He's not afraid to challenge any problem, and is willing to take a risk to better the communities and environment in which he lives and operates. He has a niche for knowing how to not only develop, but execute a plan. To accomplish what Mr. Meyerhofer has, it is obvious that he is persistent and sees projects through from beginning to end. He perseveres through the tough and difficult times, and continues to seek alternatives until the issue at hand is resolved. Mr. Meyerhofer was the founding president of Virginia Poultry Growers Association, which began in May of 2004. He, along with support of his board and a group of growers, initiated this cooperative to purchase and continue operations in Hinton, Virginia, a poultry processing plant that was at that time owned by Pilgrim's Pride and was shutting down. Mr. Meyerhofer had just six months to devise and implement a successful plan to keep this plant up and running. In this time, Mr. Meyerhofer was able to raise some $15 million in startup costs from producers, farm credit, USDA Rural Development, Virginia and West Virginia state governments to make this cooperative a reality. Later, Mr. Meyerhofer also spearheaded an $8 million rail expansion that added to the capacity of grain unloading facility. He was able to raise $3 million from railroad and state funds to launch this project that today is known as the Grain Unloading Station. I would also add, as a personal aside, I was personally involved in that potential plant closure, as was my, my dad and my uncle, and those are three farms that are still operating today because of Mr. Meyerhofer's work in saving that processing facility in Rockingham County. So he has considerable skill in management, and I'm very proud that he's joined us today to answer your questions in regard to the request that's before you, to continue the funding for the feasibility study to bring poultry to Franklin County.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Meyerhofer.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. Couple of comments after sitting back here and listening to all this.
You will speak into the mic, please, thank you, sir.
Okay, a couple of comments after listening to all this, solidified my thing on why I never run for Board of Supervisors, and the other thing, next time I'm going to go before he does, because it seems like it's went to pretty tough decisions. Do you have a PowerPoint? And thank you all for taking the time to hear what, oh, I'm sorry.
What are they doing there? You want something to drink?
I'm okay, thank you.
Which way?
Yeah.
Okay. So, it, I've been, it's okay to start? I've been asked to, by the Farm Bureau, to come down here and take a look at, of what it would take to bring poultry production into Franklin County. I was also a longtime dairy farmer, so I know what the, I know what Franklin, and I sat on a number of state dairy boards at the time in my past, and so I know what happened to the dairy business in Franklin County. And so, like, like Dale had said, Franklin County is, has got a lot of land, and I also used to be a resident, not a resident, but I used to come down here a lot on weekends for 18 years. And so, what I see in Franklin County, and what I have heard from the, from this group back here, is that you're looking for something out here to, to get, to help maintain your agricultural production in Franklin County. You've got a lot of landmass out here, but it'll also, and I, and I understand, I mean, your, your tax revenue base is a lot around that lake down there, which I like to say, I pay those too. But we're looking, but we're looking for something else out here, because you've got to drive by a lot of farmland to get to that lake. And, and those, that drive is a lot better to make, when those farms are upkept, because they have the fundability and the feasibility to be able to do that. And you're also looking at how, can you keep younger farm families on the, on their land out there as their caretakers of that land? Give them a brighter future to look at. Right now, they're looking at old dairy barns or whatever, and beef cattle, and they just don't quite see that to be enough. And it might take 10 or 15 years for this effect, in the, in the scenario that I put together, as, as for, to see the real benefit of this here, of bringing something like this here into the ca- into the county. Poplar operations would be an anchor to a lot of these farms now, and that anchor helps you be able to take those, the funds from that, that facility that you're doing, utilize your time, and maybe you can go do some, maybe greenhouses, or whatever else you want to do, beef cattle or whatever else, it comes to ver- come to think. We had some phone calls with some people down here and people up there in the survey, but everything, when you look at the people in Rockingham County, what, what they will say, tell you foremost and above of everything, is the diversification of income. In the past, you used to do it with all just dairy, or you did it with something else, but, but now, now you need that diversification and to be able to spread it out, and maybe that diversification is all farm income also. The economic benefit, if you pursued this here, if, and because it takes about a million bucks to put up one of these houses, so these people aren't laughing at the investment they're looking to make in, in your county. And so if you built five houses, you've got a gross farm income out of those five houses of $630,000. If my calculations are correct on what, on what your tax revenue was back here some time ago, that it would be $29,000. And if, a lot of economic studies, and when we did the one in the Poultry Co-op, we did an economic study, and they times seven on that. So you times that 630, times, times five, because when the farmer takes it out, or he spends it somewhere else, and they spend it somewhere else, it's paid in wages, and they spend it somewhere else, and, and it rolls on. So it is, it is a pretty good thing. If you eventually get to 15 houses or something like that out here, wherever this goes in the future, you're looking at a lot of, a lot of influx in the cash wise, into your own thing, and not just on the farms themselves, but for all of Franklin County. Grain farmers would be a good impact on, because they have a lot of local source of a fertilizer. Right now, there's a lot of... Right now, there's a lot of local, there's a lot of organic fertilizer and poultry already been trucked into Franklin County and Carroll County and things like that. Local exit, it takes about anywhere from $130,000 to $250,000 worth of excavating to put one of these pads in and the facilitating roads that carry, to be able to carry the, the feed in and things like that. So local excavators could be somebody that would help benefit from this on the front end of things. And they're there again, they're gonna, they're gonna have money, they're gonna spend out somewhere else in their farm, their labor or their, their construction business. Construction labor and supply companies that would benefit from the construction of these houses. If you put up a, you know, a 704 house, a 63 by 704, a lot of lumber in them things, you know? And so that all has to be brought in, labor to build the houses and things like that there. There again, right off the bat, you're gonna be able to recognize some of that labor money being spent in your own area here. Then the added commerce would benefit the whole area from restaurants to clothing stores, because they're all gonna utilize that money that they're gonna be making, whether in construction, on the front end of things, or in the, the, what the farmers would gain from the selling of the birds and the production that they have and things. So as, it's, it's a big deal in the readily available spendable income out there. One of the possible obstacles that, that you works with, well, first you gotta find the integrator. I have tagged 18 different people or 18 different companies that, that might be interested in some of this. Some of them are too far away, so I've kind of whittled that down some. I've got, I've got some no's, I've got some maybes. That, but there might be some viewpoint, there might be some non-farm citizens in Franklin County that might have a different viewpoint than the farmers themselves. I mean, let's be realistic about this. But, but there again, take to my next bullet point there, it's nice to drive to the lake and look out there. Like I say, I know all about that there, but you gotta drive by a lot of farmland to get there and do these here. So these operations are a lot nicer to drive by when you don't see broomsage growing up in them and rot it down fences and you see a place that's well-kept. I feel there needs to be a compromise of both sets and both mindsets in this, in this type of scenario. The Rockingham County has kind of come to grips with that. If you go back of Dayton or anywhere in Rockingham County, you'll see the guys riding, or the, not guys, cyclists riding past on bicycles right past turkey houses. They are two incredibly different sets of citizens, but they've come to a peace agreement there that, okay, this, it's better to ride past that. It looks good than to ride past, past something that's depleted. The county needs to have both, a farm and non-farm industries for a healthy economic base from which to make a good place for a family to live and give them a hope and a future out past that. This is, and I also say this, I don't think it's in my previous day, this is not an old man's game. I mean, this guy ain't in it, you ain't in it, but I don't even know what you do, but you're not in it. But anyway, but, but it's not an old man's game. You're looking at something for your future people to, that you're talking about all these schools out here. You're looking, you're looking at them people and their kids. That there's what you're doing this for. You ain't doing this for me or maybe even some of the people sitting back here. But, so anyway, and, and some people talk about it because you do have a body of water that sits here. And it was just something going to local news up there yesterday about the, the algae group blooms in the Smith Mountain Lake. And I turned the TV up, I wanted to hear that. Oh geez, that's all we got to have right now, but anyway. But every poultry operation in the state of Virginia is required to operate under a nutrient management plan. And that's been that way for 20-some-plus years. And so you can quickly dispense that off. What are another possible obstacles? And so as I dug into your county code a little bit, because somebody had mentioned to me that was 1,400 foot setback on a poultry feedlot operation, is what you all call them in your county code of 16 points, something, I forget what that number was. But anyways, you dig into all that there and I realize, and talking down here a couple of times, I realized, okay, you're talking about a poultry operation building, not a feedlot, like I would call a feedlot. But, but then it wasn't 1,400 feet, it is actually 300 feet. And, and so that there, in Rockingham, it's 300 feet and I think you can go to 150 with a special use permit. I'm not real sure about all that, but that's, I think that's what they, that's what they told me on the phone. And I did download the county code and read that there. So why not do this here? And, oh, and Rockingham County is at 150 feet on setback and 75 on a special use permit. But integrators, and why do this here? In order to get somebody to come in here, they're gonna kind of wanna know that their governing body that they're getting ready to move into is a little bit in their ballpark. I'm not saying you gotta be 100% with the yes with everything they say, but they're not about to come in here and say, hey, yeah, we'll put, we'll put our birds in here and we'll help you with your, 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 your production here and things like that there. And then all of a sudden, they hear about the Board of Supervisors ain't in their court. That's, that's a good way to run anybody off and, and pretty much kill some. And like I say, I wanna integrate again, you're building this here for your future, not now. You, and very little funding will go a long ways in helping these people get started back here. I mean, it, it, it's easy to defend to your citizens, I think, that, okay, we're, we're helping this, this group get started here, but at the end of the day, we're helping, we're helping you too, whether you're working downtown in a bank or you're helping these guys out here on the farms out here. That's about it, and I'll, I'll take and try to field any questions you've got.
Anybody got any questions?
I have a couple of questions about it. So, well, first, I'm really optimistic that this would work for the farmers. They, they really need the help. So I'm, I'm starting from that point of view. One thing that makes me a little skeptical, I've seen in Pennsylvania County where they have chicken barns and they've just gone out of business. So they've already made the capital investment, they have the structure there, and yet it, it seems like they still can't make a go of it. And so it makes me wonder, well, is somebody that has a grassroots effort where they have to build one of these chicken barns from scratch, is it gonna pay out? So that, that's one, but let me add to that. It also seems like you need a critical mass. So there's this integrator, that's really important. But it, I'm guessing that they're probably, you need a commitment from a certain number of farmers to do this along with the integrator to make it work. And so that, and then the, so, and then the last is, I'm wondering, it seems like you really understand at this point that this could work for us. And I'm wondering, are you the consultant that's doing the study? And, and I was thinking that coming out of the study, you'd be telling us that it made sense, but it seems like we're already at the point of it makes sense and you're doing that, that next phase of work. Is that correct? So I'm giving you, those are all my questions.
Yeah, okay. I have a fingers count here, but anyway, the, the first one, what was your first, let's see?
It was about, well, in-
Oh, oh, yeah, the type, okay. Don't associate with poultry and people going in and out of poultry with a single type of business. A lot of those farms you read about in Pennsylvania were cage layer operations. And the, the move came back, started back 10 years ago about the negativity of cage layer operations like that there. And, and so those guys, they, and now it's all about wanting to, wanting your chickens to be able to lay wherever they want to, you know? And in this, of course, and in a confined area somewhat, but, but in, but the, a lot of those cage layer things are. The other part is, is like this, this, this poultry industry, every, everything has a lifespan and whether, and I'm not real sure where the information you gathered or things like that there. But everything has a lifespan. And, and if that is an older type building that has, doesn't have tunnel in it and, and the integrators are looking at them and say, well, it cost us too much to raise the birds in your house because you don't have good airflow and things like that there, then they get cut out too. That happens in Rockingham County. I mean, you can drive around Rockingham County or surrounding counties and see older houses that it just doesn't make good sense anymore, you know? And so that was, that's just one scenario. Don't lump them all together. And your second point was?
It was about there, you really need a critical mass. I talked about the integrator, but do you also need a certain number of farmers to commit to doing this? Like is it, could you just have one farmer and an integrator or do you need more than this to work?
It'd be awful nice if you had three or four and maybe five to start out with. I know that's a pretty good mindset. Now, you're not gonna have five, it's gonna be built all at one time in the next 18 months, obviously not. Hopefully you would get one started, you know, and, and things like that there. And you build yourself into that four or five and, and work from there. But, but yeah, you're gonna have to have a few. And the other thing is you're not, for the integrator to come in here, they're gonna haul the birds back, more than likely, they're gonna haul them to Rockingham for them to be processed or possibly in the, in the North Carolina to be processed. So you're really just a, a housing facility right here at this point in time. Not that you can't do something else down the road, but that's what you would be at this time.
And then the last part was just, I'm, I'm thinking back to our meeting with the Farm Bureau and you were looking for the, I think it was $75,000 for a consulting study. So I was thinking that you're the consultant and you were gonna tell us about the scope of your study. Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, I, when, when they came to me, pre-COVID, is when, when they, they first made a call and they said, hey, can you do this here? Because I, I do have a lot of knowledge and all this stuff. And I said, yeah, well then COVID kind of put it all on the back burner. And so then when they came back this time, I put up a series of, I said, and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty conservative also. And, and I didn't wanna say, okay, I give them a, a, a number that it would take to do the study, but I put it in four go, no, or three go, no-go points. The first go, no-go point was doing an economic study with some of the numbers of which, I don't know where all that's at. But with you all, they have it. But, but so I put together a scenario, a phone, a go, no-go points. And then they decided, yes, we will go forward with this, to the second phase. We are in the second phase of that now and I'm calling poultry companies to see who is interested and who would not be interested in partnering and bringing production into this company, into this area. And that's where we are now. If we get to that, at the end of that phase, they have another chance to say, go, no-go. And, and then we'll go on or we'll just stop the study all at once. So I put those in there just to protect them.
So the, the Farm Bureau has funded Phase 1 and Phase 2, and you're in the middle of Phase 2. So will the Farm Bureau be coming to us for money for Phase 3? I'm, I'm just trying to understand how this is gonna work.
The $75,000 request would cover 3 and 4.
Okay.
So that, that would complete. And, and with, with that said, you know, Phase 4 would involve, you know, retaining, you know, professional help and it's a little hard to predict exactly what those costs would be.
Okay, so I'm sorry to ask so many questions, Chairman. So the, the money you would need from us is to fund Phases 3 and 4, right? So, good so far?
That's correct.
And so are, are you gonna talk about the scope of Phases 3 and 4 tonight or is that another, a meeting another time? Were you here just to talk about the ongoing work and where you are in Phase 2?
Well, the, the main purpose we were here was to, to update the board and to try to give you an opportunity to meet Mr. Meyerhofer and ask him questions about his work. And certainly I think he'd be willing to go as far as what the, what the board would want to go in terms of, you know, sharing that information, whether it's what he's already got done through his work in Point 2 now, or what he anticipates getting involved with in Point 3 and 4. And then I think you have the funding, as part of the funding request, you already have excerpts from Mr. Meyerhofer's work before you, I believe. And so that's, that's, you know, there, there is, you know, you know, we, we didn't quite know quite where the, how far to go with in terms of the minutia of the information that, that you wanted for, for this type of meeting here at this, at this moment. And the $75,000 is, is a, a number that we, we arrived at in consultation with Mr. Meyerhofer and the full Farm Bureau Board to, you know, we, we feel that that would adequately cover. But the Farm Bureau may still have to take action later if it doesn't, you know? But we're, we're in that, that we feel like that is a very fair request to make for the, and I just wanna say that, you know, in terms of the, the revenue stream potential here, I think it's, I think it's enormous for the county as well as for the farms that would be involved. And as I've already pointed out, you know, I have some personal experience with that. And it's, it's, it's a very, I think it's a very lucrative opportunity for the county. And in terms of the amount of money that we're asking for here, I think it would be an exponential return on that money and revenues gained for the county.
Any more questions? Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. Meyerhofer. This isn't the first time that Franklin County has went about trying to do this. This has been done several times in the past. And in your experience, what do you think is different this time versus times in the past when it just didn't pan out?
Well, it's, it's been, I, I think one of the things you have to look at, and I, and the 2022 Farm Census just come out last week. So I went and done some digging around in that also with Franklin County. And, and I don't know where they come from, but they say there's already nine brawler houses in Franklin County already. I've never seen them, I don't, and maybe they're just small backyard places, but I'm not really sure how they got into that census, but it's there. So, of which, like I say, I still don't know where they're at. But anyway, what, what might make it different this time is that before, there's, I think, it was the same way in Rockingham. There was, there was people that, they were all dairy and they were 100% dairy and they wasn't gonna mess with a bunch of poultry on their farms. There was a lot of dairy and they, and then they, that kind of dropped off and they built greenhouses. They was doing other things. And, and they went off and got, but they realized, if you come to Rockingham, there is hardly a farm around that doesn't have a poultry building on it or something or somehow connected to that with two family members or somehow a dairy of which may or may not, or beef cattle, or they got a greenhouse or other things. So I think people have, have a little bit different mindset that they're just not looking at poultry as the one and all to save their, their farm. No farm has that joy anymore unless you're, you got a dairy or you're enormously big in what people would just start to call commercial farming. So what makes it, is, it's a little bit of a different mindset. I mean, I, I think you're, you're, I think this area is ripe for poultry because you are kind of isolated from the rest of the, and that's what I've been telling them. You're all new housing and you're isolated. You're probably 50 miles from the closest one that I can find. And that's a big thing to an integrator. You're also 60 miles from Hillsdale Produce Market. And, and I, I sit on a lot of, I judge research projects for Virginia Tech and, and Virginia State. There's a lot of interest out there with, with, with people taking, and because this poultry operation isn't gonna tie up all your time. And that diversification of income, if you can have poultry that's doing something here, but you also have a greenhouse that's doing something over here, or maybe you still have an existing dairy operation that's doing something over here, then they're, they're away from the mindset that one enterprise will carry you all the way through life. And that's just not where farming is at anymore unless you're pretty dang on good size. That's what I see different. I could be all wet, but that's what I see.
Have you had much interest in the integrators you've already spoke to?
I've gotten, yes, well, I, I've, I've, like, of the 18, or some of them are 300 miles away, even though they're in North Carolina. So, you know, that's probably, it'd be a real long shot. I haven't, I've gotten some no's from bringing pullets in from a couple of companies. Table leg, egg operations, I got one that said no. The one from the Co-op in Amelia, where we got formed Central Virginia Poultry Grower Cooperative. I've talked to them, they don't have a contract just right yet that would support new housing, but they might this fall. That's what the chairman told me the other day when I was speaking to him. So there, so it, it might be a couple of different scenarios of different kinds of poultry that would come in here. And, and keep in mind, you also, with the table leg things, you also, you set in one-third of the country's population within 500 miles, with an eight-hour truck drive. You're, you're, you're in one-third of that population and so that's, that's huge. I mean, it's really huge. And, and so I, it's a few things that are different than what they might have been before. And I think it's in the mindset. And that, and that younger generation of mindset, they can kind of see that maybe some along. The poultry house won't be a one and done, we're good now for the rest of our life. No, that's, that's, that's just one of the anchors that you got on your farm holding you down. No, that's just one of the anchors that you got on your farm holding you down.
Quinn?
Dale, last point. So I'm really supportive of doing this, and I see that this 75,000 is for your points 3 and 4. And I would just like to see a one-page summary that included your scope of work and your deliverables. So what do you see at the end of this? So not tonight, but I'm just saying, that would be a due diligence, it would be nice for the board to have to see exactly what you're trying to do for the 75,000, and what do you get for it? What are the deliverables?
I think that is very, happy to comply. Very happy to comply with that.
Any more questions for Mr. Myerhofer?
I would like to make one more comment, again.
Yes, sir.
Why would you not do this? That's really what you got to sit there. I mean, you're talking about one EMT, one firefighter for one year, which could, I know you've got school problems, good lord, I sat back there for an hour and a half and listened to all that, and holy cow, ain't got a chance in hell. But anyway, but anyway, but when you look at it, the rest of your population out here, why would you not do this?
Because you told me I was too old to.
He did say that.
That's exactly what you, I guess she was getting me back for saying, let's get it over with.
I think this is a great ray of light to young farmers across the county who have struggled to try and find a way to stay on their farm.
That's right.
It is very tough, and-
Got to give them a little hope.
You're exactly right.
And let them know that you're in their court, you know?
You know, and Nick, to your point, you know, we've had, we have dinner with Farm Bureau Board once, twice a year, and we've got our ag board seated, and we talk a lot, and we project a lot. And this board, on and off over time, has said, you know, we need to mean what we say and say what we mean. And we're not going to change the ag landscape here if we don't help.
That's right.
And I think this is what this is all about, and to give our farmers a hand up that have been under so much duress.
That's right. And like I say, come to Rockingham, I hate to settle, but you know, Rockingham, this year, we just passed, surpassed Lancaster County in income per acre. And we got to 2,100 and some, 2,132 dollars of income per acre in the county. And that's surpassed Lancaster County. And that's a pretty good step. Granted, Franklin, but Franklin used to be the number three dairy county in the state when I was, when I was president of DHIA back in the early 90s. You had, you was the number three dairy county in the state. And you're not there anymore. Rockingham just lost 42 dairy farms in the last year. And so you're not there, but you got to figure out what is the next step, because do nothing ain't going to work for you. Still got a lot of acres out there that need something done with them. We done?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Armstrong, will you come back to the podium, please? Are you having any interest from the farmers in doing this?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, that's, and that, he's just in that phase now, but we've already had the call, the conference call, it's been mentioned already with farmers in Franklin County with existing poultry farmers in Rockingham County, which was very fruitful. And it was, you know, a lot of great questions asked by the Franklin County folks to the Rockingham guys. And, you know, it was a call that went on for an hour or more, you know, it was a very, very good exchange of information. And I think that there's going to be a lot more of that. You know, historically, Franklin County is not a poultry county, and we understand that. So I've tried to do my best personally to try to fill in gaps, knowledge gaps and confidence gaps when it comes to doing something new as a farmer and getting the benefits of that diversification of income, the big bottom line for these young farmers, that's going to anchor them to the family farm and extend the life of that farm another generation, which is so meaningful culturally to these farmers and to these families. It's, you can't overstate the significance of that.
Has anybody committed to building a farm, to building a chicken house?
We haven't gotten to the place of actually offering anybody particulars on what they would be signing up for when you're asking, and we got to get there first. There's a lot of interest, but, you know, you've got to, you know, I mean, these buildings are not inexpensive. They're, we're talking about, you know, a million dollars for a house. So, I mean, there would have to be, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of things to work through, there's, you know, there's a site evaluation, you know, where are we going to put it? Mr. Myerhofer mentioned the setbacks. That's something very important that the county could help us with. As he mentioned, in Rockingham County, the setbacks are less than here in Franklin County. The topography here is less forgiving as well because of our, you know, deep ditches here and just how the land is. You know, it would help us a lot if we could get those setbacks more in line with, you know, what we have up in Rockingham, which is, you know, 150 feet from a property line.
I know we worked on this eight or 10 years ago, and there were some guidelines set out there, do you recall those?
No, sir, I wasn't, I wasn't in here that-
There were some guidelines set out then, I just don't recall what they are, and staff can pull those up to see what, they're already there. Do they need to be modified or changed?
Right.
Maybe, I don't know. Maybe not. But I do know there were some guidelines there. And I remember it had something to do with the runoff, water runoff and things that, of course, laws have changed with retention ponds and things like that, but we may not have to reinvent wheel, just may have to adjust it a little bit. Is there any more questions for these two gentlemen? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter? If this was to go forward with this 75,000, where would the money come from? Good question. Same as the schools, where's it going to come from?
Good question.
You got the money tree back there or the machine going?
I'm planting seeds as fast as I can get them. Is this, I'm assuming this is a next fiscal year request, or is this a this fiscal year request? A little unclear.
Well, they got to do their proposal and everything first. What are you hoping for this to get through? Mr. Armstrong, the money?
Well, the study's ongoing, so, you know, it's-
I mean, are you asking for it today?
Well, you know, I wouldn't turn it down to that.
That is so the right answer.
I mean, we've been realistic, sir. I mean, you know, we just don't have 75,000. Trying to ask, what's our parameters here?
So, you know, Sonny can probably give you a better idea of his timeframe.
Probably, I mean, we're sitting here at the end of February now. I would think these houses would start being built somewhere, if we get a go from an integrator and people look like they're starting to sign contracts, you would start to be building houses maybe this fall. So the study will be done basically when somebody says, yes, I'm willing to, I'm willing to sign a contract, and I've got an integrator coming that's willing to come in and say, okay, well, we're willing to show up, we'll sign the contract with John Doe. Study's already over at that point in time for me, for my part of what I signed up for. That doesn't mean I kick them to the curb and say, I will pick up a phone, but that there's basically, whether that is in two months, three months, or what, your four months, do you get to your budget? I guess you roll over in June.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Carter, if it's done this year with all these changes, would that go beyond the 1% where we'd have to have a public hearing?
No, the 1% typically applies per meeting, so-
Is that, is that 1%? Is that just for one item at a time, or does it, is it overall when it changes the budget?
Well, it's overall, but it's typically per meeting. So you can't exceed 1% of an appropriation in a meeting. So you would be okay with that for the 75,000? We could pull that, well, I hate to say the capital reserve again, we just pulled that. You only have 50,000 in board contingency, so that wouldn't be enough to cover the 75 if we want it this year.
If, if-
But if it was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I may, I'm just wondering, you know, with board contingency, the board contingency has 50,000 in it.
Right.
In terms of the study, I don't know the timing of the study, of course, our next fiscal year starts July 1st.
Right.
So sometimes with projects, we phased them where a portion will be in one fiscal year, a portion the next. But I just wanted to confirm the board contingency balance currently, as it stands now for FY 2324 is 50,000.
Well, I say that, we just restored some coyote bounty money, so I think it's 45,000.
Okay, so 45,000 in that?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter, I'm sorry, Ms. Thompson, I just wanted to clarify that.
If a motion was made, if a motion was made to go for it today, and I don't know if it's prudent, but we could, if we put in our stipulation in the motion that it was up to 75,000, and it had to be, they had to put in a request for, and show where it was spent for this much money, and that would scatter it out over a long time, it wouldn't just be a check written for 75,000 to do it that way.
The ideal would be to have a funding request that we would include as our external agency funding.
It's going to have to be there to begin with.
Yes, the idea-
Have it out upfront.
Yes. But if we wanted to fund it ahead of time, we could pull some one-time pots of money to fund it, yes.
Okay, does that, you said out of the, where would it come from, contingency?
We have 45,000 in contingency, we could pull the other 30 from probably capital reserve off the top of my head. I'm also thinking about where I'm going to find 1.5 million dollars in other reserves, so I don't want to delete them too much. So I would say the capital reserve for the other 30, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, board members, y'all heard what he's just said. Any discussion?
I think it'd be a good investment for the county. Can get it done.
Anybody else? Do we want to do a motion, or do you want to sit on it until March? We got to make a decision on it. I don't necessarily think we got to do it tonight. I think, I really think we, I think it would be to our advantage to wait until March to give Brian time, and then Mr. Armstrong to come up with this plan that Quinn asked for, and to get it all together. I think you are reading the consensus of the board. We're 100% behind the farms. There's just some particulars that's got to be worked out and how that goes. So I would entertain a motion to table it until our March works, not work session, but our executive session.
I assume move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Y'all keep in your prayers, Mr. Carter, he had to leave, his wife's in the hospital, and he came to the meeting today as well, so he got a phone call and took off out the door. Keep him in his prayers, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, before we adjourn-
Yes, ma'am.
I just consulted with Mr. Whitlow, and I think the motion that we had, that I had put on the table with regard to the schools, I think somehow we need to clarify that part of that funding, the 1.2 specifically, is school carryover. And that the 1.3 is county, 1.2 is carryover. We did not specify that money as carryover. And I don't know, Mr. Chairman, how you want to do that, or whether staff is understanding that. I just want to make sure that we are very clear.
I think the term was, that's the legal term, judicial notice that that's what it was. That's how I understood it, that the 1.2 was the carryover, and then the 1.2.5 was coming out of the capital. That's how I understood it.
1.2.5 out of the capital, and the 1.2 being the rollover.
Correct.
Just want to make sure we're clear with our-
Is that the way everybody understood it? That's what I understood.
Well, I understood it.
Just want to be careful.
Anything else? All right, we're going to adjourn until March the 5th at 3 o'clock for the school budget here. Be careful going home.